Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call to order our City Council's study session for Tuesday, March 12th, 2019. First order of business is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you'd like to show video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM in a business day to the deputy city clerk, Lita Hashi, at lhashi@smamish.us. Please be aware that city council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. Sorry, I feel bad, I have my back to everybody here tonight. So first up, we have Jan Byrd.
My name is Jan Byrd. I live at 3310 221st Avenue Southeast. I'm here tonight to comment on the Kohani Park Master Plan, and my hope is in developing this plan that the city will be sensitive to a very special wetland we have in the park, which is Queen's Bog. As you read in Mary Wichter's email to many of you, some of the information straight from our comprehensive plan, it states that bogs are one of the highest-quality wetlands in and immediately surrounding Smamish, and there's about 12 of them, and they've formed over a period of thousands of years in depressions created through glacial forces. And they're dominated basically by spagnum moss and can be up to 20 feet deep on the ground layer. They have a unique acidic water chemistry, and they also have low levels of dissolved oxygen with few or no buffering chemicals in the water. So why is that important? Well, number one, they're very unique. Most of the bogs in the U.S. are in Alaska and other countries, with a large number in Canada and Russia. Their habitat from many animals, they contain rare plants, they store in clean water. Bogs provide this function probably better than any other kind of wetland. They hold water nutrients so they don't just wash away when it rains. They're also carbon sinks. They've been identified as one of the major storehouses of the world's carbon, exceeding that even a forest. So as we all know, carbon dioxide is the greenhouse gas that traps the heat in the lower levels of the atmosphere, and that contributes to increasing temperatures with climate change. Stormwater is one of the greatest threats to bogs, as it can shift the water chemistry, which can contribute to the decomposition of the peat, causing the bog to break down in a relatively rapid timeframe. And basically, they're essentially, as it said in our comprehensive plan, irreplaceable natural resources because no mechanism has yet been found that can recreate bog conditions in a time range that humans would be around to see. So basically, once it's gone, it's gone. There's a gentleman by name of Joe, I'm probably mispronouncing his name, Rochio. He's a senior vegetation ecologist with DNR. I recently gave him a talk about bogs at the Native Plant Society meeting that I attended. So I wrote to him afterwards, asked him what he knew about Queen's Bog. Apparently, he'd been out here a number of months ago to see it. He's studying 17 bogs in the Puget Sound lowlands to hopefully figure out the best way to protect bogs in the urban environment. He said, "Our initial anecdotal evidence or assessment is that Queen's Bog is not doing great." He said, "He's noticed vegetation changes related probably to summer drying and solarization, and he suspects this is also a result of the point discharges on both the north and south side." He said, "All this is speculative at this point, but in a few years, they'll have more rigorous data-informed assessment. However, they won't be completing this until late 2020, early 2021." So given the study, it won't be done until after the master plan is completed. I hope we can go forward with the master plan and going forward with it, that we'll check in with Joe and the DNR to see if they see any red flags related to a plan that we've put together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Next, I have Diane Weinstein.
Good evening. I'm Diane Weinstein, and I live at 24116 Southeast 45th Place. I've been a resident of Kohani for over 30 years. Within the park, Queen's Bog is a unique and precious area that needs to be protected and preserved. The bog and surrounding natural areas were neglected for decades by King County, and I'm not aware of anything that Smamish has done to protect the bog either. Many noxious weeds have spread throughout the area and need to be controlled, and this includes English ivy, Scotch broom, Tansey ragwort, and yellow archangel. Approximately 10 years ago, Smamish planned to acquire Kohani Park from King County and proposed making numerous changes, including changing the park from a local community park into a regional sports complex, replacing the natural sports fields with artificial turf, fencing the park to protect the artificial turf, adding bleachers, adding night lighting, adding additional parking, and punching a road into the park from Southeast 32nd. For the new Kohani Park Master Plan, I have the same concerns today as I did 10 years ago, namely, the park lies entirely within Kohani. It was created by the developer as a community park, and its overall character should remain the same. Extended use of the park would negatively affect traffic and congestion along Kohani Boulevard. The outdoor lights and expanded use of the ball fields would generate excessive noise and light pollution, which would negatively affect homeowners in the surrounding areas and real estate values. If synthetic turf is installed and the use of the ball fields are expanded, the residents of Kohani and other park users would no longer be able to enjoy the park for family activities such as picnicking, playing games, playing frisbee with the dog, or other impromptu activities. Artificial turf is suspected of leaching lead, arsenic, and other toxic chemicals. This would obviously have a negative impact on our children, wildlife, and the environment. The park contains environmentally sensitive areas, including the 12,000-year-old Queen's Bog, which would be negatively impacted by the expanded use and leaching of chemicals from synthetic turf. The abundant wildlife in the park and surrounding areas would be negatively impacted by the expanded use, noise, lights, and other pollution. For the benefit of the residents and of our wildlife, please protect the park from excessive development. We all need natural areas to live and breathe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Bonnie Anderson.
Thank you for the opportunity to address council members tonight. My name is Bonnie Anderson. I live at 24116 Southeast 45th Place in Smamish in Kohani. I'd like to talk to you tonight about Kohani Park. I am requesting that Kohani Park at least be kept at least as natural as it is today, with as much emphasis on environmental improvements as on organized sporting events. I have concerns about the environmental and health effects of synthetic turf. If artificial turf is a consideration, I am requesting that a thorough risk assessment be conducted, both in terms of its use and maintenance. The assessment should include, but not be limited to, the effects on human health as it pertains to body waste transference. That includes such things as blood, sweat, and tears, and the absorption of possible carcinogenic impurities, toxins, and heavy metals. The effects on nearby wetlands, ponds, and Queen's Bog as it pertains to the water runoff that may be polluted with hazardous materials. The effects on vegetation, such as the many native growth areas surrounding Kohani Park, again, as it pertains to contaminated water runoff. The effects on wildlife as it pertains to loss of habitat, food, such as insects and worms, and water. Today, I was at Kohani Park, and it was beautiful. It was filled with birds looking for food in the grass. I am aware of the harmful effects of using fertilizer, herbicides, and pesticides to maintain grass. However, through the use of organics, grass and other vegetation can be maintained safely. In addition, perhaps there are measures that can be taken to promote the durability and longevity of natural grass fields through aeration and top dressings. Lastly, any cost considerations between natural grass and synthetic turf must consider both the short and long-term impacts on human and environmental health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Steinbus, 24933 Southeast 14th Street. Good evening, council. I'm speaking about the Kohani Park and the Queen's Bog. I'd like to support the goal of minimal development of Kohani Park with a concerted effort to instead save the Queen's Bog natural habitat area. Kohani Park contains one of the most unique and rare ecosystems in King County, the Queen's Bog. I think that the focus of the development of Kohani Park should be on the preservation and restoration of the Queen's Bog, with minimal new disturbance to that ecosystem. Bogs are very susceptible to environmental disturbance. There are already point source introductions of stormwater coming from the north and south, which are possibly causing degradation of the Queen's Bog. It is unclear whether the existing stormwater pond near the Queen's Bog is impacting the bog. This is something that can be researched further with the City of Smamish to get more information about the specific stormwater pond. Reference the pond ID number, DR0609. There is already ample opportunity for recreation in Kohani Park, including hiking trails along the power line trail, a baseball field, soccer and lacrosse field, and a cricket pitch. Note that the maintenance of these fields should be with concern towards preservation of the bog environment. So, for example, typical weed and feed products should not be used on these fields. These chemicals can get into the groundwater and cause further degradation of this rare and valuable ecosystem, as can runoff from the parking lot. Park amenities such as the restrooms may need to be updated, but I would suggest that any additional disturbance be kept at a minimum. Kohani Park could instead feature such educational opportunities as a pollinator meadow, community gardens, and so on. The Kohani Native Plant Demonstration Garden is located across the street from Kohani Park, further supporting the educational opportunity that Kohani Park presents. I hope you understand the need to protect, restore, and preserve such a rare and unique natural feature as the Queen's Bog, which is located in Kohani Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Go ahead. If you want to, you can just kind of queue up along the wall here.
Good evening. I'm Anna Yorba, and I live at 25025 Southeast Kohani Boulevard, which is right across the street from Kohani Park. My hope for the park is that its exceptional natural resources will be given priority over active recreational improvements. Most of the park is occupied by Queen's Bog and its surrounding forest. The bog represents a unique ecosystem rarely found in Western Washington. The possibility of expanding public use of the park by installing artificial turf and field lighting is a major concern. As stated in the 2018 Pro Plan, the potential for adding field lighting would have to be coordinated with added lighting to parking areas and support facilities, improvements in field conditions, and mitigation of impacts to adjacent residential neighborhoods. The park is accessed from a residential street with a 25 mile-per-hour speed limit. The parking lot only has 30 spaces. Existing street parking is used by local residents at night and on weekends. I'm afraid that expansion of use would negatively affect local traffic and lead to paving of additional parking space. There's a supply well at the far northeast corner of the park that provides our drinking water. The parking area and plane fields lie within a critical aquifer recharge area, meaning where an aquifer that is a source of drinking water is vulnerable to contamination that would affect the potability of the water. Addition of synthetic turf fields and field lighting will increase the number and duration of cars parked there, resulting in increased runoff contaminants. I can't speak to the merits of synthetic turf versus natural grass, but the manufacture of tons of synthetic materials that will have to be disposed of in the future from this turf is likely to be harmful in the long run. Light pollution is also a threat. With no major lighting in the area, the dark open sky over the park is an excellent place to walk out and look at the stars at night. Artificial light also disrupts nocturnal wildlife, such as pollinator moths and insect-eating bats. Community comments on past proposals for park expansion showed a clear preference to leave the park as is. I ask that any sport field expansion in Smamish be consolidated with public spaces that are more compatible with traffic, night lighting, and impervious surfaces. I suggest that the existing plane fields and amenities be repaired and improved as needed, and that an emphasis be put on providing for educational opportunities and environmental I also would like to see the power line corridor replanted in native pollinator plants that will continue the web of habitat that is restoration that is taking place on the Kohani portion of the Plateau Trail. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mary Wichter, and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish. Ditto, 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 ditto. I sent a couple things about go fly a kite, not to bog you down, but there are spagnum bogs, and there's a bunch of information in King County's Surface Water Design Manual. So the other things I think that should be looked at is, although Kohani is completely developed, suppose so to speak, the area above Kohani directly by the bog is still on septic systems. Don't know if that causes a problem for the park, but I think you should know that information. There are also critical aquifer recharge areas. This is where there's a public well, people drink from it, and the blue area is where in one year, water will make it down. And then the blue area with the slashes is where in five years, it will make it down. That's a Class 1 critical aquifer recharge area. If you do anything to pollute the water, you can kill people. It's happened in Canada and other places, and I've spoken on that before. And then the green area is within 10 years, and then the yellow area are CARA 3, where the groundwater is pretty high and the aquifer can get polluted. So those are things I think you should think about. I've passed these maps around before. This is also the aquifer susceptibility, and where the red is, is where you could have aquifer in the entirety of the area that you're planning as part of it. It's also a CARA 3. For the water quality map, the entire part, or most of Smamish, should be in a water quality treatment area for sensitive lakes. Spagnum bogs are actually a higher level than that, and it includes the whole area. And on this map, I believe there's 11 counted, but somebody said there's 12. All the spagnum bogs in the state are not mapped, but there's roughly 50 of them. So we own 22% of them, about 25% of them, so a quarter of them in our city. So we need to learn this stuff, and we need to learn how to protect it, and if you are going to do things, you really need to think about it, because once a bog is gone, it's gone. And one lady said it's 12,000 years old, and there's a lot of environmental things for it. So it is, those are very special places in our city. Also, on flow control, it says it should be in conservation flow control, but there's a lot of exemptions that happen, so I'm hoping that whatever drainage was done, it will be looked at as we continue to go on if the fix was not sufficient. Also, for spagnum bogs, if you need to do a treatment, you can have a treatment, followed by another treatment, followed by a third treatment, and they specify what that is. So it's very, very special. It's probably not simple or uncostly to do, but I think it's worthwhile. Also, if you look at the wetlands and the connectivity corridors for wildlife, I think it really makes sense to keep Kohani where they can do that. Kohani is also relatively flat. You can see here, there's only a few of the contour lines. This is more complicated over here where the steep slopes are. Also, you'll hear people saying, "Kohani, well, that water just goes down by the field, and it just sits." The reason it does that is half the park is actually on till soil, which is like very, you can't get through it. And then part of it's on outwash, but that's just upland from the bog. And then there's two more soil types that I didn't have time to research. But I've given you these all-in maps. These are city maps that I'm just giving back to you, and I can send them online as well. And then if you look at the street map, the street map actually shows kind of where the corridors are for walking, and I think this is very close to the outskirts, and I really think that you need to try to keep the green. Just to mention on zoning, Kohani is anywhere from R4 to R18, but overall, if you just do the number of acres times the number of units, or divided by the number of units, so 3,200 units on 884 acres, Kohani is actually an R4 overall. So I think that's really a good lesson for us in things that we need to do. So as I run out of time here, I would like to keep it for kite flying or things. I think you need a band shell next by the baseball field so you can hear things like music or Shakespeare in the Park. And then I've emailed you the rest of it, so I won't talk about it, but please consider my information. Thanks for taking our input early.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address council? Okay, very good. I just got to get out of what I'm in here, hold on. I know the first topic is the Kohani Master Park Plan, so we going straight to Angie?
Give it to Angie. Great. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, as well as members of the public. This evening, the Parks and Recreation Department brings forward the first of three steps of the Kohani Master Plan project, and tonight, the consultant will provide an orientation of the park and its existing site conditions in a short PowerPoint presentation, and then move into a less formal discussion exercise to gather council comments and thoughts for Kohani's future. With that, I'd like to introduce Shelby Peral, the City Park Planner and Project Manager, as well as Juliette Wong, President of HBB, and who will be presenting this evening. With that, I'll turn it over to Juliette.
Thank you. All right. Of course, I cough right off the bat. So today, what we'd like to do is talk about hopes, dreams, concerns, and visions. So what we're going to do is give you a background of timeline, some of the research that we've been doing, some research we still have yet to do. We'll go through some fairly specific existing conditions on the park site, so we're all starting from the same baseline of what's out there today, and then spend some time at the end, really giving a chance for you guys to talk to us about hopes, dreams, concerns, and what the vision for this park should be. And then we want to reserve just a couple minutes at the very end for our next steps. All right, so moving into this, whenever we start on a master plan process, or really any project, we like to first look at what's already been done. And I always look to the comprehensive plan and some of the Parks and Rec Open Space plans as a baseline of really what's important to a community, what's already been discussed, and what that sort of citywide vision is for the park system. And so, starting off in the 2018 Pro stands for Parks Recreation and Open Space, so it's a citywide parks plan, and the goal is to see parks as an integral part of the healthy and sustainable community, connecting people to nature, play, and culture. Now, within that overall vision, there's three core goals: conservation of natural resources, improving health and wellness, and social equity in access to parks and recreation. So this becomes just one of many lenses that you'll hear us talk about through the course of this process, that we want to come back to again and again and just test design ideas, test concepts, test the things we hear and listen from this early portion of our process against this overall vision and goals from the comprehensive plans. Where we're at in the world, we are sitting in Smamish Commons, as we all know. We're this kind of purple, purple dot up in here in this corner. Kohani Park, as you've heard today, is part of the Kohani neighborhood. This is circled in the red right here. So also, within kind of a closer proximity, Beaver Lake Park, so it's immediately north to us, it's also along the power line. Within that is actually, even north of that, a very large natural system that we sort of start to get connected to through a series of green spaces. There's also Pine Lake Park and Doofy Hill Park to the east and west of us. Our project timeline, we are at the very, very beginning of our process. So we had our kickoff meeting kind of mid-last month. We are in the midst of our site investigation and analysis phase, so we met with the Parks and Recreation Committee. We're talking to you folks, obviously, tonight. We have also started to gather a focus group of interested sort of stakeholders and organizations, and we will continue to go through and delve a little deeper into our site analysis and the research that we've been doing so far. We're going to take that information we hear, we're going to look at programming, kind of what fits where, what types of uses we want to hear. We also have a public survey that we're launching soon to kind of coincide with this, and from there, we start developing concepts. From concepts, we develop a master plan with the goal of having the master plan completed by the end of the year, so we can spend some time going through an adoption process towards the end of this year and potentially pushing into the beginning of next year as well. I want to remind people what a master plan is and essentially what it isn't, right? So a master plan is basically a document that guides future development. It is intended to set a vision for a specific park, in this case, to look at what types of uses we want to see, what activities do we want to do, what's the programming that we're interested in, and we get into what the relationship of those different programmatic elements are in a site, so that we do make sure what we're proposing to do fits within the context, makes sense, is feasible, and that we consider the short and the long-term goals of what those activities might be. So we go through this process that you see here with the analysis. The community survey and public meeting, that's what's coming up as part of this phase. This is really the listening phase. We haven't designed anything, we haven't started anything, but we really are just trying to understand what people are most interested in or most concerned about. Then we move into developing schematic concepts, having additional public meetings, additional sessions of discussion, and then into the master plan adoption. What a master plan is not is a detailed design, and so that's important to remember. We do get into feasibility, we do want to know, we look at sizes, we look at relationships, we look at the infrastructure that is needed, but there is very much a further process that's going to get into much more detail as you start to get into implementation. So on the site itself, starting with some background, when the park was originally transferred to the King County and then to the city in 2016. In 2017, it's important to note, there were some minor improvements done to the park, both in terms of the drainage on the baseball field, there was also some improvements to the restroom, and some minor kind of maintenance infrastructure-type updates through the park. Nothing significant and nothing major. And then, of course, knowing that this process is going to commence, part of this process will also look at implementation and phasing, so that as investments and improvements are made, they're done, understanding what that long-term vision is going to be. All right, we're going to go through existing conditions. So coming back into the site context and zooming a little bit closer into Kohani Park itself, there is a number of public and private and sort of semi-public-private with the schools that are immediately adjacent to our site. The peat patch you heard about sits just to the south of us, and that, not circled, but we will get that in before our first public meetings, is the Native Demonstration Garden just right here to the south of our parking lot. We also have kind of what we call the hidden ball field that's down off of the trail. That is part of the Kohani Neighborhood Association, and a number of other neighborhood parks and open space, and then the two schools on either side of our park. What you see here in the aerial of existing conditions that definitely dominates the site is the natural space. You've heard that quite a bit tonight. Queen's Bog is kind of the majority of that that sits in the wetland. So this system is both the bog itself and its kind of unique attributes, as well as a series of wetlands that kind of join and transition from the bog. So it goes from the bog to the wetlands to the upland forested environment. There's also, obviously, the more improved area of the athletic fields that you heard about, the cricket pitch and the soccer fields. We'll kind of show those and highlight those as we go through this next phase. There are three easements on the site, the Williams Gas Line Easement that cuts through the bog itself. This is an underground pipeline. You have the Bonneville Power Administration, which took over from PSE, right? PSE originally. And so that runs in the yellow along here, and then there is actually a Puget Sound Energy easement that is remaining outside of the power line trail, and that we are doing some additional research on to see what the purpose and the background of those. Important to note, because they do have their own unique constraints associated with each of those easement areas. All right, to the bog and the critical areas. So beyond just the Queen's Bog itself, we also have five other wetlands on site, and one more wetland, that's a fairly significant one as well, over on the school site. So we like to look at not just what's on our site, but what's immediately adjacent. The trails you see in a couple of different colors, this blue trail, the East Plateau Trail is kind of the major trail, the Trail is kind of the major trail that goes along the power line, it continues through into the Kohani neighborhood and along Kohani Boulevard. The light blue is also a paved trail system that is connected to the power line trail and extends beyond into the neighborhoods. The pink trail is what we call more the informal or unimproved trails, so this is kind of a secondary or even a third level of system that is kind of those found paths, some are a little bit more developed than others that snake in and around the site, and there is possibly even a few more back in here along the south side that Shelby just couldn't find when she went weed-whacking the other day to try and find them all. So a number of athletic uses on the site, two soccer and lacrosse fields, use it for multipurpose, and the cricket pitch that you see in the middle, that is essentially a practice pitch, is another one that is coming in soon, that is this one that sits over the edge. The cricket pitches themselves serve as batting practices as well as games. When there are batting practices, there's a temporary net that's come in and put up around it, so it can help constrain the use of those fields. The Little League field actually is of a same size, that it can also be used for fast pitch softball, although it is used primarily for Little League as it is today. It is, and these are all natural fields, with the Little League having the skinned infield, used primarily by the U-12 age group. Support facilities and more family-type activities, so this is the restroom, the play area, parking, it was mentioned earlier in the public comment as well, there is significant on-street parking, and then the school parking is even used when there is major events held on the site. I will say the play area itself, it looks like it may have actually been improved at some point since the park was originally constructed, but it still looks like it was kind of back towards the '90s. It is for the smaller age group, it's pretty much limited to a two-to-five age group. It's in fair condition, but it does not have ADA accessibility into the playground itself or a number of those play components. There are a number of city events that happen at the park, Shakespeare in the Park and Kids Fest, these draw a significant number of participants. They are focused, their activities are focused in the open field of the soccer fields themselves, and people will sit traditionally kind of out in the grass or up on the hillside, that's up by the restroom. And then there is the stormwater pond that you've heard. So what we're finding out is a little bit more research into the stormwater pond is still needed. It is a three-cell system. Exactly how and where it drains and how often, or if it does overflow its system is information we're still looking into, but it does look like there's some connectivity between the stormwater pond and potentially the school next door. So we're looking into exactly what all feeds into and out of that stormwater system is still to be determined. So really high-level site opportunities and constraints. Again, we're at the very early, early stage of our process, but some of the things that stand out the most to us, connectivity, this is a heavily-used park, there is always people walking around out here every time we've been out here, and it is really well-connected into the community. There is something for all, there's a little bit, there's both passive and active activities, you have a great natural system to be able to really understand and educate people about. The downside in the constraints is there's also something for all, so you're trying to do a lot on a relatively small site once you sort of take out those natural systems. So that limited space and those easements are gonna be significant constraints that we need to work through. Okay, so with the discussion itself, what we'd like to do is, I'm gonna actually pause and move up to the front, so that I can kind of help guide and facilitate the discussion and also document and kind of mark on the maps for your comments. Okay, I get to try and write and talk in a microphone at the same time here. With my luck, I drop it right on you. Okay, so for the discussion side, I think this is turned on here. Okay, so for the discussion side of this, it's really what are your hopes, dreams, and concerns? So that's what we're looking for. It's, again, things that we're gonna use as a baseline when we start to launch into the public process. Excuse me. I'm happy to mark on the boards if there are other things or other considerations that you've had, your experiences being out at the site, more analysis, more kind of tidbits that maybe we aren't aware of, I'd love to hear that as well. I want to start by talking about the hopes and the dreams, so, and then we're gonna kind of break and then talk about some of the concerns that you might have, so that we can kind of get around and have kind of a broader discussion. And to kick us off, what I'd actually like to do is start by asking a question. If you could, in one word or phrase, start by telling me what you think the vision or what your vision for this park should be. I'll give you a second.
Why don't we just go around? Councilmember Stewart, you wanna start?
Yep, so, starting over here.
It's daughter Larry.
I don't know that I have a vision that's succinct. I guess, you know, what I'm thinking is, how can we maximize the use of the park while also obviously being very aware of and deferring to the environmental impacts? And I know, I know you guys are aware of that, but that's, you know, you know, we want all of it. We want to maximize the use but have no environmental impacts, right? You can just make that happen?
Right, no environmental impacts.
Well, I mean, and I say that jokingly, because I don't, I don't know that we can have no environmental impacts, but I guess I would, I would, maybe no net environmental impacts, because I think that way there can be trade-offs. If we're going to develop some area, is there something else we can do to offset any environmental impacts we may have? So I would say maybe something more realistic would be no net environmental impacts.
Okay. Next, Councilmember Ross.
There you go. I think something like optimize use and enjoyment of the park while being keenly aware of the environmental impacts, especially the bogs.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Hi. I'm pretty straightforward. Leave it alone. I can add more if your hand isn't tired.
When we get into the hopes, dreams, and concerns?
My hope is that you leave it alone. My dream is that we can maintain the bog for another 12,000 years. My concern is lights and too much use.
Okay, I'm happy you repeat the concern when I get to the concern, so I get it all in the right spot.
Sorry, gotcha. We're under, oh, we're just under hopes right now.
Yep.
Oh, vision, I didn't see.
Yep, vision.
Gotcha.
It's in orange, it's hard to see.
I think Councilmember Ross actually said kind of what my line of thinking is. I think we're all hypersensitive to the fact that that bog is there, so expanding, I think the footprint that currently exists is not in my vision. I wouldn't want to maintain the current footprint that the park has. I do have a question, though, if you can answer it. I was going to ask during the slide deck. The trees that are bordering it appear to be a fairly thick buffer between the park itself and the neighborhoods behind, but, nope.
Yep.
This one, okay.
How tall are those trees?
I do, so I do not have an estimate off the top of my head of the height of the trees. They are fully mature, they're significant trees.
Okay, so I guess the question I would have then is, as we talk about lights, and I recognize the concern of the immediate neighbors to the lights, but I'm curious, in today's reality of how good lighting can be, whether or not the light will actually penetrate through coniferous trees that appear to be fairly thick, at least in width, and that if their height is, if they're mature, significant trees, they clearly, the lights would not, in theory, be taller? So I'm just curious truly what the impact of lights would be. I mean, I'm conscientious of the neighbors, I understand their concerns, and I don't want to minimize that, but I want to understand the reality of, if we put lights in there, considering technology today, will they penetrate through, and will we actually have light pollution to the neighbors that are adjacent to it?
And if that is something to start to study as we get into the design process, there are tools to use to start to show how far that light penetration can go.
Okay, that would be important. We're doing a vision for.
So in a word or phrase, a short word or phrase, what would be your vision for Kohani Park? Welcome to, welcome to the discussion today.
I gotta scoot over, go this way then. She's taking cold medicine.
Do you need a minute?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, come back to me.
We can come back to you.
She's processing still.
I have a, I have a, could I, so I have a quick question. The notch at the top, like, what is that, and how does that impact the buffer on the bog? I'm just curious.
Jason knows all this. If you didn't know, Jason lives in Kohani, so.
See the Y in property line?
Yep.
The Y in property line there, on the bottom, on the word property line? See the Y there? If you draw a line straight down, that's my house.
Happy face.
I'm not sure you wanted to share that publicly.
I was gonna say. I'm not labeling it, it's probably a happy face.
He just said he's gonna sniff him up.
Go ahead, it's utility.
Okay.
Right along the gas line.
Do we know what the, you know, is it, because it is an easement there, is there anything happening there? Because I see there's no trees on it, but is that something that, you know, what can we do there in terms of, could we put trees? It doesn't seem like it's part of the.
Yeah, so it basically has a number of utility vaults and paved surfaces and other access points in this, in this zone. There are some trees that kind of spark around the edges, there's also a little bit of an open space for parking, I assume, for maintenance vehicles.
I get, I mean, I know we're not quite there, but if we could put down there, since that is something that, like, the gas company owns, since there is impervious surface there, is that something that we could ask them to look at? You know, as we're looking at being sensitive to the bog, are there improvements that they could make that would be more environmentally friendly there?
So I'm saying reduce impervious surface with partnerships?
Well, I don't know if we need to reduce the impervious surface, I'm just calling that out as, just, since, since that is a utility area, but it is bordering on that bog, if there's anything that those, that whoever has that, if they, if we can start to work with them to make any kind of environmental improvements, that just seems like it's kind of nestled right in there in a pretty sensitive area, so.
Okay, so I want to, we have two councilmembers that are on the phone, so I want to give them an opportunity to inform you on this vision, too. So Councilmember Hornish?
Yeah, I'm gonna answer the question. FUN, F-U-N.
FUN. And I put it in capitals. Okay? And there's one more?
Yeah, there is. Councilmember Valderrama?
Yes, can you hear?
Not really. Yeah, he said his connection was a bit off.
How's this? Is this any better?
Yes, much.
Okay, I guess I can keep it on speaker line. All right, I would say that I'd like to maximize its use while watching its environmental impact. I would like to see it used similar to our community fields in Eastlake High School and Skyline. I think we have had similar issues in both those schools to address.
Are you catching what he's saying? Okay, I'm not. Okay.
I heard the school is an example, or a good example or a bad example?
So, and, and, we need the consult, and I, I'm sorry, her name?
Juliette.
Juliette. We need the microphone up here, because people that are watching can't hear you.
Okay. There you go. Oh, now it's really working. Okay, thank you. So the skyline, I heard only part of that, something about the school, the skyline?
Well, Eastlake High School and Skyline both had issues about natural fields versus artificial and lights, as did Pine Lake Middle School, so.
The artificial, they both have artificial turns and lights at those community parks.
Correct. So maximize use and watch the footprint, the environmental footprint.
Okay, got it.
Okay, your tent card's up, so that's why.
Okay. And then, do we want to come back?
Well, the only thing I want, the only thing that I really want to be cautious about is, one, the bog, of course, but also is the, is the light pollution in that area. But I also want to make the, maximize the usage out of that park, but I also want it to remain a neighborhood park with the utilization, I guess, of a city park, but I don't want the neighborhood to lose the feeling of it being their neighborhood park, so I'm hoping that we can try to find a.
So keeping the character, is that a good way of saying that? Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Any other elements, or from a vision statement standpoint? We'll move on to hopes and dreams.
I have a quick question, though, and Angie, you may be able to answer this. Who's, it was stated that it's Little League that's using it, it's Smamish Little League that's using that for baseball. Okay, so it's kind of, it's already got that community field aspect to it already? Okay.
Yeah, we have lacrosse, we have.
Arena sports used to go there, do they still go there?
I don't believe so, it's mostly community groups, so it's cricket, lacrosse, and Smamish Little League.
Okay, very good.
And soccer.
Okay.
Okay, so along the lines of vision, we want to stay on the positive side and talk about your hopes and dreams. So this would be other things that you would like to see, activities, values, other things you want us to know about as we launch into this process.
We'll go in the reverse order, not to put you on the spot. Okay, so Councilmember Valderrama, you're up first.
I would, I would take Hornish's words, FUN, and maximize the use, which would include looking at beyond the Hani for the social equity that we are lacking in fields. It will always be a neighborhood park, but we need to be able to make sure all Smamish is taking advantage of every one of those fields.
So I put down social equity in fields? Is that a fair statement from what I think I heard?
Yes, but all Smamish utilizing the field as much as possible for that age group because of our shortage of fields.
So you're talking, specific to youth sports, then? Or are you talking all sports? You said age group, which had me, because there's some adults that are using the community fields, too, correct? Yeah.
That's correct. I'd like to see everybody at different age groups, but primarily youth currently using it.
Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Hornish?
Can I have the question repeated, please? I'm trying to distinguish between the first question and the second question.
So the vision was just intended to kind of get you warmed up, what, one, like, if you could describe what you wanted to do here in one word, what would that one word be? It kind of morphed from that into hopes and dreams. So we're just kind of letting it, more of an open discussion on additional ideas, hopes and dreams that you have for the park.
Okay, neighborhood gathering place for me.
Okay.
Which implies a neighborhood park more than a general utility.
Okay. Next. Deputy Mayor Moran, you get to be next.
I would agree with what Councilmember Hornish just said, again, staying with the neighborhood feel, but I would like for the park to be as loved and utilized as some as, it's like our Pine Lake Park or our Beaver Lake Park, and some of those parks are so, so loved that I'd like for this one to be the same.
Okay, next.
By default, I'm next, but let me ask, is this hopes and dreams?
Hopes and dreams.
Oh, good, okay, my dream is that everyone's happy at the end of this process. Honestly, that sounds really corny, but I understand the neighbors' concerns that are in the immediate vicinity of it and wanting to hold on to it as being more of a neighborhood park. I think we've already got a little bit of the community aspect going on in there, which is, is good, so I want to be respectful of that, and I think by keeping that footprint as it is currently, that hopefully that's achievable. But I do have the hope that we can alleviate some of the pressure that we have for field usage, because that is a real crisis in the city, and I think we have to be cognizant of that.
Okay.
Councilmember Ritchie.
My hope is that we leave it alone. It's a neighborhood park, there isn't sufficient parking anywhere, especially along the side of Kohani Boulevard, and that is the main arterial through the city. It is 25 miles an hour, and we, you do have, most evenings during the summer and every weekend when it's not raining during the year, there are kids getting out of their cars on the wrong side, on the street side, and jumping out into the traffic. I mean, it's, it is a serious traffic risk as is right now without increasing the use. The parking lot is not sufficient, so my hope is that we can bring the kid- I mean, it's, it is a serious traffic risk as is right now without increasing the use. The parking lot is not sufficient, so my hope is that we can bring the, the kid part, the, the playground area, up to ADA standard and maybe invest into that. The bathroom could use an upgrade, for sure.
Can I have you pause there for just a second? Okay.
I would just like to emphasize, and with due respect to Councilmember Valderrama, this is not Eastlake High School. This is not a Skyline High School. This is a neighborhood park. This does not back up to 228th. This is in a neighborhood. There is only one way to get to this park via vehicle, and that is along Clahani Boulevard. And increasing the traffic along that street, when we're talking about what's going on with, uh, the Iskowell Falls City Road, it's probably going to happen anyway. So I just want to make sure we're understanding that this has been, was designed as, and ought to continue, from my perspective, to be a neighborhood park primarily with a community flavor. We are part of Sammish. We're no longer just Clahani in unincorporated King County. We are part of Sammish, but the, the footprint of the park is as a community park. Unless we're talking about creating another access point, and I do not think we should, then we need to understand the limitations of access to the park. Are we in hopes and, we're in hopes and dreams?
Yeah. We're still in hopes and dreams.
You bled a little into the concerns, but I'm getting it down.
Okay, well, then I hope that we recognize that while the bog is a significant portion of the park, I hope that we can recognize that that is the anchor of the park in, from an environmental perspective, from an educational perspective, and to recognize that adding in more utility for the ball fields, um, I don't think that's a bad thing. I think that's a good thing. But what does that mean to that anchor? And I think we always need to refer back to the Queens Bog and the potential impacts. Anything we're doing is, is happening. What's going on? How are we impacting the bog? And honestly, I don't know how you're going to figure that out.
My job is never easy. But it is fun. Okay.
Councilmember Ross? Uh, hopes and dreams?
I think it's key, we try, we balance the Sammish community utilization while retaining the neighborhood character of the park.
Okay. Next.
All right, so I'm going to be different. I'm going to ask a little bit of a question before I share that, and that is, you already mentioned that, you know, whenever you've been out there, it's always heavily used. So one question I have is, how much is it used? Is there really any capacity to expand this to be more of a city asset from the, the neighborhood asset? Because it does feel like, or I think it's important for us to understand the, the data there around, we have this community, it's a neighborhood park in a, you know, in a, in a pretty large neighborhood, and so is there really any additional capacity so that, I would hate for us to, you know, by saying the city gains a park, that the neighborhood loses one. And so, you know, I think it's that same balancing act, but I just want to know what that data is. So when I think about the, the hopes and dreams, I would love, I hope that we can improve the condition of the bog, right? So any, any areas where there is any degradation or concerns that we actually improve the condition of the bog, that we improve the quality of the fields, the play structures, the things that are there, and that in doing so, we also reduce our environmental impact in doing that, right? I think, you know, certainly, we know a lot more about how to build things without having environmental impacts than we did in the 90s, so I'm hoping that we can do that. And, and again, my dream, it may be a concern as well, but my dream would be that we, we ensure that Clahani doesn't lose a park while the city gains one. Because if, if this is already fairly maxed out by Clahani residents, I don't know that we want to, to necessarily change that, because we, if we bring other people in and we displace those people, we haven't really made an improvement, so.
Okay. Is there anything else on hopes and dreams that anyone else would like to add? All right, let's talk about concerns. All right, so we started a list, because it's, we were going to start in the middle anyways, right? So we've got a few already, which you might not be able to read my writing. Expanding parking, uh, safety of parking on road and of, so of users having to cross that road. The existing parking is not sufficient, and increased traffic. Where would you like to start?
I'm going to start in the middle, so. Councilmember Ritchie, do you have additional concerns?
I'll be in the middle. I, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely have concerns about anything other than minimal improvements to the park. It is something that is highly utilized by the folks living in Clahani. Clahani's a walking neighborhood. You have folks that do take the bus, that live there, that do not have cars and are, you know, this is their park they go to on a frequent basis. So it is literally walking distance from all of Clahani. Clahani's a, it's, that's what it, the shopping center, that's what it was designed to be. It's why, one of the reasons why my family and I chose to live there. So I, I think it's important to recognize that we are at that point right now where it is highly utilized by the folks that live close by. I would just, again, the bog, the drainage, I'm not sure what more we can do other than to improve what's there in an environmentally responsible way. I'm sure we can talk about lights and astri, artificial field, astroturf, whatever we're going to call the, you know, the, the grass for the soccer pitch and the cricket, whatever you call cricket pitch, is that what?
Cricket pitch. Soccer field, cricket pitch.
Sure, there you go. All that. We can talk about what that means, the environment, and I'm definitely willing to participate in all these discussions, but I think we need to recognize that right now, the, the capacity is there, and I think that some folks, if you go out there, when, when I go in early in the morning, and I'll be going in early in the morning, there are, that place is covered with wildlife, deer, birds, bears, coyotes. It is a little sanctuary out in the middle of the city, and it's, I think anything we do to disturb that is an affront to what we're trying to do here in the city and preserve some of the wildlife in the open spaces we have. And I think that if we start putting in artificial things, artificial light, artificial turf, things like that, I think that is a negative. The, the drainage is a problem, but I don't know how you affect the drainage in the northeast corner of the, northwest corner of the park, in the northern corner of the park, the detention ponds there, without getting into the Queens Bog. So I'm not sure how those things, if you get rid of one thing or you fix one problem, are you causing the water to drain into the bog? Does that change the dynamics in the bog? It's a very, very natural habitat as is, and that's why I'm in favor of leaving it alone, except for some minor improvements. That's my concern, that we're, we're looking at the wrong park.
Okay. I can go. I think my main concern is the bog, and I, I'm concerned at least about what we heard during public comment about it's, you know, already showing signs of degradation, whether that's, I'm, I'm really very interested in what you said earlier about those stormwater retention or detention, I can't read that, it's far back, of their retention or detention ponds.
It's a little bit of everything.
Okay. And what's going in and what's coming out? When were the last time they were serviced? You know, is there a sand filter in there? I, I mean, I would really, I'm really interested in that stormwater system and what's going on there, because I have some real concerns about the bog and the quality of it, and if that is a product of the degradation, then we are, it's imperative that we work with, I assume that that's inherited, that's our detention pond. I mean, have we ever taken a peek at it? Do we know any, I mean, it sounds like we have now that we're engaged in the master park plan, but have we ever, has it been serviced at all by the city prior to engaging in this park plan?
Yes, it is, it is serviced regularly by the city and has been since it was originally taken over from King County.
Okay.
And getting into the details, now we're looking at which pipes go where and where water is feeding in into and out of, but the functioning of the system itself has been maintained by the stormwater inspectors and the folks at the city.
Okay.
The other thing we are looking into, just as, for kind of references, there is, and you heard this in the public comment, there is drainage from the neighborhood that feeds directly into that bog. That was just the way things were done when this was built. And so concurrent with this project, the city has kind of enlarged, on a kind of a larger watershed-based look at stormwater and stormwater improvements to be concurrent with this process, so we'll be able to kind of tag team a little bit on a wider watershed basis, as well as what we can do in the immediate neighborhood and in the park itself to help support and improve Queens Bog.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think the fact that you just said there's multiple pipes running down there gives me the heebie-jeebies, frankly, because we have no idea if that's, nothing's filtered, right? If, in its natural state, when there weren't any houses there, the rainwater went through a very natural process through the ground and into the bog, and now it's running off of someone's roof down, and we don't know what, right? We just have pipes. So investigating what those pipes are, where they're coming from, where the water should be going, because there should be a detention pond somewhere, right?
Yeah, for the, for the, like, where those, like, following those pipes back up? Where is those pipes coming from? Yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's my main concern, is, is the bog. Not to diminish the concerns of the surrounding neighbors, but I do have some concerns there as we look to potentially, you know, we're having discussions, obviously, about the potential of lighting in this park, about the potential of turf fields there. And I think it, it came up during public comment, is, you know, if we put artificial turf there, which, you know, might give us some, there's some trade-offs, right? And I think it's understanding what those trade-offs are versus, natural turf versus artificial turf. But again, the concern is what's leaching out of the turf and, you know, whether we use the coated crumb rubber in there, which is probably better from a, a health perspective, at least my understanding, the carcinogens in the uncoated crumb rubber. And I believe it's polyethylene coating that they're using on the crumb rubber anymore. But still, there could, that could be leaching out, and over time, you know, could that be as well impacting the bog? But then, but the neighbors and the light noise, I mean, obviously, there's noise that's generated from the park anyway, but if you add lighting, it changes the duration of the noise, because it will go longer. And so that would be a concern of mine as well. I have spent many a weekend at that park, so it's, it's already kind of got that community vibe, so when I think, when we talk about it being, you know, utilized or, you know, maximized already by Clahani, I think you have a lot of groups already there. Before that was incorporated, I was there with my kids, because Arena Sports used it for all those soccer fields, right? And people came from all over, and I'm guessing the cricket pitch fields and that club that is used there is not exclusively Clahani people. So it does have that community feel, but I think for the neighbors right now, the concern is the what-if scenario. I think if we keep the same footprint, you're, by definition, you're going to be limiting how much it can be used beyond its already, its current capacity. So I think that's good if we maintain that footprint, but I understand their concerns and that frankly, I, I share their concerns in that as we move forward with it.
Okay.
Councilmember Ross? Am I going the right way now?
No, I think you're supposed to go that way.
You could zigzag at this point.
As long as everybody gets their, their chance.
Councilmember Ross?
Concerns. It, it really is a balancing act across not just Clahani Park, but all of our parks. One council member mentioned field shortages, which is true. How do we optimize our community facilities? And we, one of the things about, we're hearing a lot about today is the environmental sensitivity of the Clahani community in the park. And that is, that is a very important consideration in the overall assessment of how we're going to maximize our park facilities in Sammish. So my concern is that we don't just take a narrow look just at Clahani, but we, as we go through these difficult questions of how to optimize, as I use in my vision, community usage, that we optimize the right use of Clahani as it's compared and looking at other parks throughout our system.
All right, I'll bounce back to the Deputy Mayor now.
My biggest concern is still going to be with the bog, and, and as the mayor had mentioned, is where is, where do we have the water feeding in from? What's in the water that we've got feeding in? And I think that's a huge concern. Another concern I have is, I heard a comment made that was, we're looking at the wrong park. I, I have to so much disagree with that comment. I've used this park way back when my, 20 years ago, when my daughter was 10, because it was the only park where girls' fast pitch could be played. And so, you know, this is a park that has been utilized for many, many, many years for, for different things by other people other than Clahani residents, and it's, it's loved by a lot of people. And, and I think that we need to find what it is that works there that doesn't cause, you know, heartbreak to the people in the neighborhood. But I, I think that the idea that we're looking at the wrong park is, it, that really, that, to me, that, that is really a harsh comment, because to me, the only way that the comment would make sense is if we're, we're looking at the wrong thing. And I think we need to find the right thing.
It's sort of the right plant, right place, but for the use.
Right.
Finding the right use for this, for this park.
Fast pitch, for a girl's fast pitch, at, at the time, it was the only place that that could be played. We need to find what works in that park, and I don't know what that is right now, because my kids are...
No, we're going through each council member. So Councilmember Valderrama?
Yes, I have concerns about the bog. I am also concerned that people are talking about this as a Clahani neighborhood park instead of a Clahani, a park in Clahani, and it does serve the neighborhood. This issue came up in 2012 before annexation. Clahani wanted the city to maintain it, because King County would not maintain it. And in 2012, seven years ago, the city said the only way it made sense is that it would fit into our holistic system and would require more usage by the rest of the city. So we're revisiting a discussion from 2012, and the council did not accept keeping the park as is if Sammish taxpayer money was going to come through. If they want to keep it as is, then it should be from their HOA, but if the city's going to be managing it and maintaining it, then we need to be looking at maximizing its use and hours of use, taking into account the sensitivity of the environment and the lights, as we did with, with the other schools and other fields and Pine Lake Park and the others.
Councilmember Hornish?
Two concerns I have are safety and environment, but both of those encompass so many things that have been discussed already, the safety on the street, the safety of the field, the safety of the athletes, safety of the observers, as we just did in the north part of the city. The environment is similar. I mean, it's, it's the lighting, it's, it's the bog, it encompasses all of that. The interesting thing for me is both of those, you know, go into the factor of natural versus artificial, and I don't think it's any clear, easy decision, and I think Councilmember Ross said it, it has to be a balancing act, that those are the concerns that have to be balanced with trying to, having the best utility of this for our citizens, and in my vision, to have one.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so I would say I have, first of all, I want to thank the staff for, since the park has been taken over since annexation, of maintaining those detention ponds, and I'm assuming that that has been an improvement over what was being done before, so I want to thank you for that, because hopefully that's starting to stem whatever degradation may be happening in the bog. Concern-wise, obviously, I'm concerned about the bog specifically, things that haven't been mentioned yet, the unofficial trails that come very close to that around the bog, and if we do start to expand the usage of these fields, right, as we make improvements or we do things that will increase the usage of the park, how do we make sure that we minimize that impact? that impact and we don't see more people, you know, creating unofficial trails that are going to impact the bog? I have concerns, and this kind of feeds into safety, is that those heavily forested areas are prime locations for our young teens to go do things that we don't really want to think about them doing, which is not safe for them and is definitely not safe for the environment or something like the bog. So that would be a big concern is as we look at making improvements, how do we make sure we can counter the impacts on the bog in every way possible? The other concern that I would have is that we as council should not be overriding the will of the people. So I think we have significant data from the work done on the Pro Plan about what the community wants and we should be getting significant input from the people in Kohani. And really, while it's great to get the council's input, I really think that it's really the people's input that we should be paying the most attention to. So I don't know, I don't remember, it's been a while since I read through the Pro Plan stuff, but I do know you did a lot of, of data gathering there. And one thing, I don't remember from your, your work there, but do we need to do a special outreach to the folks in Kohani? Not that, you know, we're excluding the rest of the city, but because this is in the heart of their neighborhood, as with any project that we would do in, you know, in someone's backyard, making sure that we understand what they want and what their concerns are because I think that would be the most important thing.
Councilmember Ritchie.
So to reiterate my statements from before, I think that this is the only park in our city that has a 12,000-year-old bog attached to it, adjacent to it.
Nope, Beaver Lake has one too.
Not this size. So, and I, I think it's, that's good to know, I didn't know that. So I think it's important to recognize that if we're working within the specific footprint of the park and recognizing those other constraints that are other than the bog, I'm not sure what more we can do outside of lights and, you know, the field, the turf. And I'm happy to have those discussions, but when I talk about the right park or the wrong park, I don't view this as, I don't disagree that we definitely, if you knock down doors in these neighborhoods in the past few years, it is clearly a common theme that we need more playing fields, more ball fields, more activity spaces for, for kids. This is bedroom community. So is this the field that can take more of that? And I would say no. I think that this is a confined space backing up to a tight spot, Queens Bog, right? There's really nowhere else to go. And I'll add one more thing, just as an aside, and I mentioned this to my fellow council members before, that something we haven't talked about yet that you may want to take into consideration as far as the bog is concerned, in the summer of 2015, there was a significant fire in the bog. And it was pretty much out of control for about, I don't know, at least half a day. You know, it was, the Efor guys were there for three days in front of my house running lines. There is no way to get in there at all outside of, you know, running hundreds and hundreds of feet of hose from, you know, 34th Place or 32nd down into the bog. And there's really, there's nothing there to get to, to, you know, put out the fire. And that, the, the fire went on for a long time because the, the sphagnum moss growing down, it was, the fire went down into the ground or into the moss. So when we talk about things we can do to improve the health of the park, I include the, the bog in the park, I think we should recognize that we do need to create some sort of potential fire access into the park, into the bog, so that those issues can be dealt with more effectively. I don't know what that looks like, but I at least want to put that on your radar from a, a goal that I think is worthwhile because we were really close to wiping out an entire neighborhood, or at least a significant part of the neighborhood if the winds were blowing in a different direction. Thanks.
I have one more thing I want to add in as far as, not concerns necessarily, but we talk about the trails that are around there, and I've been in there, and it's beautiful. And we have another bog that's in Beaver Lake. Beaver Lake has a bog and there's trails all around that too. And there's a, an important educational component that I think would be nice to add into this because most people probably don't know that that is a bog or what a bog is for that matter, or its significance. And so there's an opportunity for the city to do some education when we talk about the trail system that's in there. I believe there's also a cross-country meet that goes on in those trails. There is.
It goes along the, it's terrible, awful, horrible, a really, very bad course. It's, it's not even an official, it doesn't even count as an official. It's on the ground.
Yeah, I've seen the markings on the, yeah.
Well, I, I've been there, my son's been running it the last four years. So it is, it is a terrible course and no, it's not.
But those trails do, and I've, I've been through, yeah, okay. But, yeah, the, I think that my point was not the cross-country necessarily, but the fact that there's trails in there and there's an educational opportunity for the city with those trails in there. Anybody, councilmember Ritchie, do you have something else?
I'd just say just more of what the mayor Malcho said, signage, no one knows that bog's history, no one knows it's there. Some sort of educate, and you have two, you have junior high and elementary school, Beaver Lake and Challenger right there. And you literally, I mean, if you did a Google search for the bog in Kohani, you get like one reference to, to Queens Bog from like some, you know, UW graduate student did a research paper on all the different bogs in the state and, and that's literally it. So this is a, an incredible, it's an asset, it's, it's a monument to our history. And I think just signage, I just mentioned to the mayor, that's something along the educational component, I think that'd be really important. If we are going to do something, let's celebrate that it's there, let's acknowledge that it's there, that, let's recognize publicly that it's there because people don't even know it's there.
You almost can't see it now. Both good and bad.
Councilmember Stewart.
I just, an idea from this conversation of opportunities is that because you do have two schools there, engaging those schools as stewards of the bog, right? And really putting it on them to kind of take some of that ownership and responsibilities. Kids love that kind of stuff and, you know, maybe that is another way to kind of help preserve, you know, when people start to run afoul, you know, you get, you get those kids involved and they're gonna, they're gonna spread the word that, hey, it's not cool to go in and destroy the bog. So there may be other opportunities there to engage those school communities in helping to be stewards of the bog.
I'm kidding.
You know, I was thinking, ah!
Oh, now you are. It's your phone.
Okay, I didn't touch that one, that was definitely not me.
Talk to you many times.
That's okay, we're using mostly this one.
Can I just say one thing that just jumped into my mind? Claridell Shed has been wrapping utility boxes with, when, when councilmember Stewart, you know, wouldn't that be cool? I mean, when councilmember Stewart mentioned kids love that kind of stuff, man, if my kids don't have an iPad or something to connect to, it's not fun and it's, times have changed. So I mean, I think something like an electronic connection, like they can actually walk up to a signage, click on a QR code and say, here's the history, here's what a bog is, here's the history, something in Claridell's wrapped, you know, like...
Yeah, there's QR codes on all those.
Right, and I think that's what my kids have done. It's a, it's a pretty cool thing that they can actually take the technological end of things and look at the history of how these things are formed. Because when you're just looking at it, like, it looks like a swamp in a forest, it doesn't really say anything. Whereas bogs are so unique, it's, how did it get there? How does it form? What is it? And what makes it unique in our community? And I, melding the technological with the wrapped, that's what I wanted to say.
It can link to that graduate student's report, right?
Then everybody will have that report.
You better get in touch with Claridell.
Councilmember Valderrama, councilmember Hornish, do either one of you have any additional comments here?
No additional comment.
Okay, very good. Okay. Okay, next steps.
So, pretty straightforward, we have an online survey that really high-level asks about preferences, activities, goals, kind of that sort of thing as well, values as we move forward into the process. That opens...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Yeah, yeah, tomorrow, okay, it's up and running. But the important thing here too is it continues through to our open house as well. So it will be an extended period of time for people to offer comment online. We have a focus group coming up and then our first public workshop on March 21st is being held at the elementary school itself so that it is close to those neighbors. So those immediate neighbors are very convenient as well as the rest of the community to come join. That'll be both a kind of an onsite walk as well as kind of an in-depth sort of active, tell us what you think kind of discussion. And then from there, we kick off into ideas and concepts and alternatives. So that's when we get those hard challenges you mentioned about balancing all these different interests and coming up with things. And I think that's it.
Thank you, that was good, very comprehensive, appreciated it. Oh, well...
Just a couple of comments.
Tom, Tom.
I was here for the original...
I, I know. Okay, Tom, hold on just a second because we, yeah, first of all, we've already completed public comment. I'll, I'll let you make a comment, but you've got to come up here to the podium, otherwise no one's going to hear you. Okay, brief is good. But make sure you turn the mic on, otherwise it's not going to pick up.
Okay. Yeah, well, thanks for the comment, but sometimes you want the public comment after the, the other comments.
True, I just want to make sure I'm not offending normal policy, which is not to have public comment now, but go ahead.
I try to understand how this city works and I still haven't figured it out. No, I was here for the original Kohani master plan and I had a lot to do with this park. Kohani with its size had no schools. It was a neighborhood with children and everything else and it was part of what I testified for that actually there are two schools. So the park ended up being quite a bit smaller than Kohani had, had envisioned it. That's why it sort of went from a community park to a neighborhood park because we all recognized that we were all having children in 1986, you know, and had children and needed schools for them and that was a lot more important. The bog is one of seven in North America, this particular bog. That's why the University of Washington studied it. I Googled it the other day and found, I think, around 17 sites and studies and stuff on Queens Bog. There's a, there's a similar-sized bog north of Beaver Lake, but it's an entirely different type of, of bog. It's the one that flows into Beaver Lake and puts some of the phosphorus into it. But anyway, thanks a lot for the extra comment, I appreciate it.
Okay, so are we wanting to dive right into our next topic or we want to take a break first? Okay, I'm seeing break. Quick, quick break.
Quick break.
Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly. Okay. We're going to get started again here. I think we're missing some member.
Yep, he's right there.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. Okay, so our next item is the Isquippine Lake Road Traffic Analysis.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Council. We're here again to just present the preliminary engineering results for the Isquippine Lake project. To my right is Andrew Zagerz. As you know, he's our city engineer. But the staff and consultants to my, to my right will be presenting the project. On the, on my far right here is Josh Anderson. He's with DEA. He's our traffic consultant. In the middle is Jed Ireland. He's the city's project manager. And then to Jed's right is Scott Soyseth, who is DEA's project manager. So I will hand it over to them.
Okay, thanks, Cheryl. I'll get started. We're here to report on the results of the preliminary design of the Isquippine Lake Road Improvements Project. The limits are Southeast 32nd Way to Southeast Klahani Boulevard. Now, here's the overview. The purpose of the project is to improve the intersection performance, improve safety for all users, including all modes of transportation on the corridor. And also, the project will incorporate water quality upgrades, because we're on Laughing Jacobs Basin. And also, we learned that we will be adding fish-passable culverts. We met with Fish and Wildlife, and so this is something we're doing as well. The purpose of the preliminary engineering design is to determine what do we need to build. Two years ago, this became a council priority. We began preliminary design to look at what it would take to meet the standards of the city, the city standards for this corridor. We also looked at getting feedback from the public to make sure we didn't miss anything. And then we also did the detailed analysis that we begin for a project like this. So we're going to go over all those elements in this presentation. So first, I'm really proud to show that we have Infoworks video. This shows the infrastructure. It shows what the improvements will look like. This is what the improvements look like meeting the city standards. And so this is just a visualization. The cars don't move. And so, but this one is interesting in that it shows at either end, a different condition for two different videos. This one shows the intersection signalized at Klahani Boulevard and at Southeast 32nd. So we're going to discuss why that's, why we're looking at both of those. So we're going to start with this one. The second one will have the roundabouts. But first, we're going to start with the signalized intersections. And as we start, you can see that it looks very similar to the way the intersection is now. It is widened for the bike lanes and for the sidewalk. And so it'll have to be new signal mast arms to reach those distances. As we travel down, we're now reaching the raised median island with landscaping. And you can see we have a left-turn lane. This goes into Southeast 42nd. Currently, it's a temporary signal. This project would propose to make it a permanent signal. We also have, we have one lane each direction. We have bike lanes, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and an amenity strip separating the sidewalk from the bike lane. Southeast 40th Place. The homes for Meadowleaf are on the left. And as we're approaching, you can see that we have a two-way left-turn lane. Now, it's again becoming a splitter, raised median island, excuse me. Southeast 37th Place, we're showing a new signalized intersection. On the right, we're going to be coming up to Southeast 36th Lane. The condominium's on the right. On the left is the entrance to part of Meadowleaf. And again, we have a two-way left-turn lane as we are approaching the fire station. You'll see on the left is 234th. And now we're coming up to Southeast 32nd. The roundabout on this one is now a signalized intersection. So this is Southeast 32nd Way. Okay, there's the bird's eye view. I'll go to the next one. Now, this one's going to show roundabouts at either end, at Klahani and then at 32nd. Again, we're starting at Klahani, and we're proceeding north. Now, in this roundabout configuration, you can see that we have two southbound lanes. We also have a right-turn lane that goes directly into Klahani. And to the west, that was the bridge into the condominiums on the other side of Klahani. All this infrastructure is the same between the two end conditions, again, Southeast 42nd. You can't see it, but there's actually a right-turn pocket coming off of Southeast 32nd that allows those right turns onto Isquippine Lake Road.
Drive right over all the other cars on the road.
No, these cars aren't moving. It's only the appearance of speed. So again, this is a new proposed signal at Southeast 37th Place. This shows pedestrian crossings. Or actually, this one doesn't. But they are pedestrian crossings. That's what we're proposing. And to the left is Southeast 36 Court. To the right is 36th Lane, the condominiums. Again, Meadowleaf is the homes to the left.
And the Montessori School on the right.
Oh, there it is, the beige building. We'll be seeing that in some other, in the simulation. And again, 234th, the fire station. And now we're coming up to the roundabout. And this one has been modified because you all, again, have two southbound lanes, and you also have a right-turn lane that gets you directly into 32nd. So it's an improved roundabout versus what's out there now. And that's it. And it's going to spin around. And I'll just end that. This is where we are on the schedule. The red star is where we are. You can see that we, in the preliminary design, we started with stakeholder interviews. That's where we met with, there were 10 different groups that we met face-to-face, and we did that over the summer. And then that culminated in the online open house, November 15th to December 5th. We had a community meeting in person, November 28th. And so that leads to the dot where we are, the preliminary design and traffic report to City Council. Below that, you'll see that we have outreach for the 30% design and another outreach that would happen between 60 and 90%, should we go forward with detailed design. That's what would happen. Another important thing is that bottom dark blue line, that shows the permitting and property acquisition would continue all the way through the end of 2020. So the earliest construction would happen is planned for the beginning of 2021, but that would be pending funding. What we're seeking from council tonight is just feedback on our process and the recommendations that we're making. And here's a list again of the, of the recommendations that would meet the city standard. And we're going to get into detail about what these mean. The first part of the process is that we, we do a community process. This is what we described on the, on the project schedule, on that timeline. And so this goes into detailed meeting with stakeholders, and then how we got their feedback. A lot of the feedback was gathered online, on the online open house, but also some were delivered, hand-delivered at the community meeting on November 28th. Just to get into who we heard from, the 10 stakeholder organizations. There's a lot of schools on this corridor, so we met with them. We also met with private schools, Montessori. We met with the In the Beginning preschool. We met with the church, the faith church. We met with, reached out to Cascade Bicycle Club. We also met with the Klahani HOA, and also Connor Jarvis, the developer. So in total, there were 10 stakeholder organizations. The online open house had 543 users that visited. You can see at the bottom that 125 of them actually left comments, which is important. We're going to get to those. 71 people attended in the flesh the community meeting on November 28th.
I have a quick question. You didn't mention the Isqwa School District when you talked about those 10 stakeholders, and they have one current school and an upcoming school right there. Did you talk to the Isqwa School District as well?
Yeah, we did.
Very good. Just making sure.
Yep. And we'll get into some of the details of that meeting as well. This shows basically where they self-reported, where they live. Surprisingly, they're mostly living in Smamish. Maybe it's surprising to see that a lot of them reported almost half work in the city of Smamish. Their users are very, very frequent users of this corridor. 120 responses out of 125. How do they use it? They, they pass through the corridor, of course, to get to other places. But a lot of people live on the corridor, or they attend one of the churches or the schools on the corridor. How do they travel? What modes do they use? Obviously, driving. But it may be surprising to see how many self-reported that they walk, bike, or ride public transit. Now, this is a distillation of what we heard from the public outreach. People want to reduce congestion, decrease speeding, increase safety. People also thought that a three-lane design was insufficient. Maybe you just need to add more lanes. That was one of the suggestions that we got. That was their gut reaction, because they felt that would increase the vehicle capacity. People prefer traffic signals to roundabouts. That's what we heard. They particularly do not like the roundabout at Southeast 32nd Street. They felt like it didn't work well. People want better access, improving the intersections overall. People like sidewalks. People were kind of split about bikes, by infrastructure, but maybe a slight majority that responded would, you know, or would prefer to have bike infrastructure. Also, people expressed interest in continuing to what we call Phase 2, build this all the way to Isquippine Falls City Road. So what we're going to look at now is, I'm going to turn this over to Josh, and he's going to describe, he wants this, you know, to lead through this. He's going to show what we're looking at. This is a simulation. He's going to describe the significance of it, how it was put together, and this shows the existing conditions.
So this analysis is a little bit different than a lot of the analyses that I've been presenting in front of you before. This analysis is that project-specific. We get down into this, into the micro-simulation level, which means we're looking at every individual vehicle as it travels, we're through the corridor. We're really looking at driver experience. What are the travel times through the corridors? Where are those queues found? So we, we were out in the field on the corridor, collecting field data in last spring and last fall. And this is really a synthesis. So what we do is we create this simulation video, and we try to get it as close to the field observations as we can. This simulation is, as we've done before, well within industry standards for calibration. And as you head north, Klahani isn't really showing many issues. So all the videos that we'll be showing are of the PM peak hour. That's the hour that we were seeing the most congestion. There are isolated issues in the morning with drop-offs at the schools, the schools' speed zone, that type of thing. But by and large, the evening commute on the way home was where we saw the most congestion. As the vehicles head north here, we're going to see 37th right in here. There's really, the vehicles don't really slow down all that much today until they hit the influence of that 32nd Way roundabout. And you'll see that there are stopped vehicles waiting to make the left turn on the 37th, vehicles waiting to come out, waiting for those gaps that are large enough for them to take. Here's the 36th development. And now, as we get a little bit in here, you see the vehicles starting to slow down. They're already starting to feel that congestion as you get, as you approach the 32nd Way roundabout. And I'm going to pause it right here. Right in here is the Montessori School, and their entrance right in here. When you only have that single southbound lane, when the parents or anyone coming in to pick up the kids are stopped, it stops all of southbound Isquippine Lake. That's, that's the, one of the biggest issues in this portion of the corridor. As we head a little bit further north, you can see that that roundabout is really backing up, and that queue extends as far back as 36th and, ooh, dang it. Oh, man, technical issues. As far back as 36th in some of our travel time observations. So what I want you to focus in on here, though.
And it keeps.
All right, down here, pause button, not next. What I want you to focus in on is that westbound 32nd queue and the southbound queue. So what we're seeing here is pause button. You can see that westbound right here, there are vehicles that can't get into the roundabout. There's too many vehicles circulating and navigating the roundabout. This roundabout, when it was initially engineered and constructed, met the requirements of that day. In the last couple decades, traffic engineers have gotten a little bit smarter, and we now understand how to optimize the design of roundabouts a little bit more efficiently. So one of the things that you'll notice is, as the vehicles are navigating the roundabout, when they come in, because of this tight exit curve, the vehicles that are approaching don't know whether this vehicle that's circulating is going to leave the roundabout, or whether they're going to stay in the roundabout. So that, in essence, turns what should be a pretty free-flowing roundabout into a four-way stop. The volumes that we're seeing, the traffic volumes that we're seeing, cannot be processed through a four-way stop. So roundabouts are very, very effective tools when they're designed properly, and when you have that deflection and the right, the right access and egress points. And a lot of this congestion is due to those really tight geometries on the entrance and the exits. And you can see that as you head down the hill here to the roundabout, right about here is where the buses pull off to go down to the bus barn, right in here. That queuing stretches up back into the two-lane segment, almost up to the middle school up here. So does that somewhat match the experience of council? I'm hoping yes. Open the floor up.
Yeah, I think at least it matches what I've driven.
Perfect.
Hey, you're right on. I mean, that's pretty much what, I would just say that there's the hill as you're coming down.
Yes.
You know, and that Connor Jarvis development on your south, on your, on your left there, right? And as you're coming down the hill there, if you are making a right turn, or even a left turn, God forbid, coming out of that unsignalized intersection at 37th, I believe, you know, that backs up because it's really a difficult turn, even if you're going right, because people come shooting down the hill pretty quick.
Yeah.
And they're not, it's a, it's not, it's a limited sight distance, let's put it that way. So I definitely feel that what you've described shows a really, and I'll point two things out. I don't know if you marked the E4 station? Maybe I wasn't listening. The E4 station, that E4 station close to the roundabout is a huge problem.
Yes.
When you, all that going on there, that roundabout essentially blocks those vehicles from being able to get out. They can blare their sirens all day long, and traffic has got nowhere to go. So I would, you know.
Yeah.
Take that into consideration as we're talking about whether we move to a more efficient roundabout or a signalized intersection at 32nd at the IPL.
And it's.
But you're right on. I mean, that's pretty much, you know, how it looks.
Not when it comes out right there.
Okay. Right when the schools get out, too. I mean, that's not our rush hour, but, you know, that afternoon thing, that hits at about 3:00, 2:30, 3:00 o'clock, when Sunny Hills gets out and Beaver Lake gets out. You're having the same situation, just a flood of cars. So right on. Thanks.
Yeah, perfect. So. It is pretty constrained, yes.
Councilor Stewart.
So I'm confused, because yes, I agree that the simulation matches my anecdotal experience, for whatever that's actually worth. Statistically, not much. But what I'm confused about is that this chart does not match what you just showed us. So can you explain why that doesn't sync up?
Perfect lead-in.
He didn't pay me to do that.
Perfect, perfect. How is a perfect segue. So this chart represents highway-capacity manual compliant level of service and delay results. The first one right there, that is the roundabout that we just showed as failing on three approaches right here. So the analysis tool that we use for roundabouts to come up with these results is CIDRA. CIDRA assumes that the, that the roundabout is designed. Cidra assumes that the, that the roundabout is designed to current standards. So when you're looking at a roundabout or a signalized intersection or traffic operations in general, there are subtle nuances for different intersections where the highway-capacity manual compliant analysis just doesn't work. This is one of those intersections. The driver experience is failure at that intersection, and that's what we're showing in the simulation. So when you get to a project-level analysis like this, I don't put a whole bunch of stock in these tables. What I do is we need to understand what's out there in the field. We need to have our analysis tools calibrated to some amish driving behavior and specifically corridor driving behavior. Their corridors where vehicle, where drivers will exceed the speed limit. Other corridors, they won't. We need to know that information. So we took all that information and we put it into the simulation model. And this table, while it says everything's meeting standards, the operationally, the simulation is not.
Can we ask more questions or do you want to wait to the end for questions?
Let's, maybe we could try to just keep going because we're going to kind of package this in a way that I think is very informative.
Okay, keep going.
So, did you want to say anything more?
Yeah, go, so go back one. So this, so existing, everything seems to work, but we did see that one failure. So now we'll go to the next slide. So this, same lane configuration. So this is out into 2035. If we have not done any capacity improvements, here's what you'll, here's what traffic operations would look like. So in this northbound direction approaching Clahani, you see a longer, a longer queue of cars. We'll move forward. Traffic volumes along the corridor are expected to grow. It's just something that we have to deal with. They are growing, not doubling, not tripling, but there is some level of growth. I think it's in roughly the 30% to 40% range. So as we pass 42nd here, everything in the interim between Clahani and 32nd are operating reasonably well. There are some instances where at 37th, you will have some longer queues as vehicles try to get out of 37th. The big issue at 37th, there are no protected pedestrian crossings between 42nd and 32nd. That's a really long distance where you've got a lot of use on both sides, but you've got southbound bus stations only on the west side, northbound bus stations only on the east side. So without that, that ability to cross in the middle, you get people doing it anyway. And it's not the safest situation for pedestrians. So I'm going to pause it right here. So this is 36th, and you are already starting to see completely stopped vehicles approaching the roundabout. Those vehicles in the existing conditions were up in here. In some portions of the simulation, they go back a little bit further south to the southern access on 36th. But as we head north, now that's completely stop and go all the way through, again, here's the Montessori access points here and here. And then I will point out the fire station access right in here. And they would have to come out into a stopped line of traffic. So the other thing to notice, there are still vehicles on this westbound approach, but now I want you to also take a peek at what happened southbound by the year 2035. Completely stop and go. We still have the access to the, to the elementary school off on the, on the east, but the queue now stretches beyond the middle school access signal and back almost to 228th. So we really need, the, the issue out there that we're expecting isn't necessarily that three lanes won't handle it. It's really the endpoints at the intersections. So this is where we go. The, again, that roundabout gets a little bit worse, but it's still not showing what we were showing in the simulation. So we still need to address the roundabout and we also need to look at Clahani in the morning, and that wasn't part of this simulation for time's sake, and I'm rather, I talk a lot. So we're only showing the PM simulations, but the AM, the Clahani intersection had a little bit more queuing also. That one's expected to fail by 2035, so we have to come up with solutions for both of those.
So I do have a question since you've got these up, and now that you're showing the 2035 delays, why are you suggesting putting in a light at 37th when in 2035, it's not failing either?
In putting in a, oh, the light at 37th? It's primarily to address that pedestrian crossing.
Okay.
There's a high pedestrian demand for that crossing somewhere between there and 37th. That is the side street with the highest volumes, so it makes sense to place it at that intersection.
I have another question on that end. Does it make more sense to do a hawk signal there then, rather than an actual stoplight? Because if you have the three-lane segment, then you could potentially have a lane where someone could come out in that median to merge without a vehicle constantly triggering the light to stop, which then my concern would be that we're starting to back things up in either direction depending on if we're in the AM or PM.
So the left turns out of 37th, pulling into the median area, that's the two-stage left turn. That does provide significant capacity improvements. But what we're seeing is that the delays in the HCM analysis don't necessarily show up as failing, but when you look at overall, when you look at the side street stop and you look at the simulation, they're having a hard time getting out in the simulation. So it's the same type of thing with the roundabout. We're not necessarily seeing the failure in the delay numbers from the equations, but the simulation is showing a little bit more of those issues.
I do have one additional question because in the simulations, you showed us a scenario where you've got two signals, one at Clahani and the other at 32nd. And then the other scenario, you showed both roundabouts. Is there a reason that you have to have roundabouts at both? And did you look at signal versus roundabout and interchanging those potentially and how that makes the corridor function? Yes, Andrew, now that you're.
The, the two intersections operate independently, so you can plug and play. You can do signal and roundabout, roundabout and signal, how, whatever combination actually works.
I think the reason I was asking specific to Clahani is because there is a wetland right there, and I was curious about impacts to the wetland by the right-of-way swath you have to take in order to get a roundabout in.
And I think that's part of the presentation.
Okay, I'll just stop talking.
Coming up here and just.
Councilmember Ritchie, though, you've got your card up.
I just wanted to respond to that briefly about the signaling, signalization at 37th. Yes, pedestrian, it is an impossible road to turn left or right on right now, and it's only going to get worse. And I've seen some people do some pretty stupid things in their cars just trying to get out of there. The, the kind of, you make that left turn and then you kind of start to merge. I don't want to speak out of turn here, but that's some next-level driving kind of stuff for certain people. And that's not necessarily, people don't come with that skill right away. You know what I mean? You kind of got to be driving for a while to kind of figure out how to do that in the right way, to be frank. And that, we got a lot of young drivers, and that turn is complicated. And then you throw that turn in there. I've done it, and I don't feel comfortable doing it. I'm looking over my shoulder and a lot of left, right, left, right going on, right? So yes, connectivity, yes, pedestrian walkway, and where else are you going to signalize it, right? That to me is, and the other thing, just coming out of Clahani, I've told, you know, my wife and I, you know, how do you get out of Clahani? You got to go right down by the, the actual signalized light. It's the really only safe way to get out of there because, at a certain time of day, because of the amount of traffic shooting up or down, north or south, it's east or west, whatever. Either way, on Isquippa Pine Lake Road. So I mean, I think that it would add a lot to safety. HCM traffic, you know, amounts aside, and I know that's what we like to focus on here, but I think from a safety perspective, it is incredibly important to put something there for pedestrian and vehicle safety.
Yeah.
Getting out of climate because people need another way to get out of the neighborhood, or you're going to have people backed up on Clahani Boulevard trying to get out, and that light's going to be delayed, right? So just want to put that out there. That's an everyday thing for me.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I'll continue.
Yeah, so, so this one is where you get with the project. So as we walk through here, so you'll see intersection one is shown a couple of times now. So we've got the different roundabout and signal options and how those two would operate from an HCM perspective. The same thing down at Clahani. Now, the signal operations there in the morning, there are very, very minor improvements that we did with the signalized option, some timing adjustments and some queue lengths, some storage pocket lengthening that got the delay down below the 55-second threshold. Not much below that threshold. So with the roundabout, Scott was, or Jed was alluding to the fact that we had that second southbound through lane in the roundabout. The signal can also be modified to have that second southbound, and then that 54-point second would be, 54.7 seconds would be reduced even further. So.
Can I ask a question back on that last slide, though? So I hate to keep harping on that 37th signal, but now we, we're showing a 9.9-second delay in the morning. Are we, are we figuring that with giving preference to the corridor? Because that's a really short delay then at 37th without triggering the light, which you want to give preference to the corridor for, okay, I just want to make sure because that's not a very, it's a really short delay.
So the, the 9.9 seconds are average for every single vehicle that goes through that intersection.
Okay.
So the 37th vehicles will be stopped longer.
Okay.
On average. Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm sure y'all have seen this table once or twice before. So with the project, the segments 30, 30 and 31 right here are the Phase 1, so the project that we're talking about today. Segments 32 and 33 are from Clahani, south to the city limits. And I apologize, this one is a little bit fuzzy. With the three-lane improvement in the northern section, you can see that the only two that are failing the city's link standards are in that southern section, the Phase 2 portion of Isquippa Pine Lake Road. The failing south of here actually causes the corridor as a whole to fail in the northbound direction in the afternoon peak. So let's move to the next one. So now, if we assumed that the Phase 2 project were built, and that's where we take it from the current two-ish lanes south of Clahani and constructed the full five-lane section south of Clahani, then the, all the segments and the corridor as a whole would meet the city's link standards.
Councilmember Stewart.
So do you have more to go? I have like a whole list of questions. Do you want to get through? Is there more you want to go through? And we hold our questions to the end, or is now?
Yes, I would love to go through some more really, really boring stuff.
Okay.
And then Josh has some more sweet simulations that are going to describe a lot.
All right. I will, I will, I will continue to queue up my questions and let you get through your presentation.
All right. Okay, thank you. So I'm just going to go through here. Now, this is going back to the question of 37th. You can see the pedestrian crossings, to the right is southeast 32nd. To the left, the, the next pedestrian crossing is 42nd, the temporary signal. And here, green is the proposed PED crossing, which would be the signalized intersection. It's southeast 37th. It's, it's right in the middle between those two existing. And so that's, that's informing our design. Okay, so all that to say is that with this preliminary design, the results of it are, we can build the three-lane section to meet the city's standards. And so this is, these are the different features that we saw and the geometric features that we flew through. The second page of the preliminary design features has the bike lane, separated sidewalks. Later in design, should we choose to go forward, we could look at potential improvements to transit stops. This is not included in what we're showing yet. Also, those fish-passable culverts that we're told we're going to be doing. Now, what we're going to do before we get to these sweet simulations, you know, we've done everything showing the city's level, the city standard for V-over-Sea and the level of service by the highway-capacity manual. Now, we're going to look at the more detailed analysis, and we're going to look at the geometry that went into the simulation real briefly before we get to those simulations, and I'll turn it back over to Josh. So this is starting at Clahani, again, with the signal, and this is just a bird's-eye view, the plan of what we're going to be proposing. You can see this is the signal very similar to what we have there, just very small improvements plus widening for the bike lanes and the sidewalks. This is 42nd. You can see that coming from the top of the picture, we have a right-turn lane that's new for 42nd, but this would be a permanent signal. Southeast 37th place. This is the two-way left-turn lane out, you know, right by the southeast 36-lane condominiums, and then also the entrance to Meadowleaf on the top of the page. And then this is a signalized southeast 32nd Way. And you can see that this has, this has additional queuing and advantages, and we're going to look now at the simulation, and I'm going to turn it over to Josh.
All right. So the design that you saw, that Jed just walked through, is layered under this video. So as we head north, you'll see that the traffic approaching Clahani is moving a little bit more efficiently. As we head north, you've got a little bit of an island in the middle, and that really, one of the things we heard from the public is that people drive too fast on Isquippa Pine Lake Road. One of my travel time runs, I had to slow down and abort one of the runs because you follow a car, and I was afraid I was going to get pulled over if I continued to follow the car in front of me. So the median in the middle with the trees actually helps to slow traffic down a little bit. It's not necessarily increasing capacity or decreasing capacity, but it just, it slows people down and it makes it a little bit safer for the bicyclists and pedestrians on the corridor. What we saw there was the signal at 37th. You'll see that north and south are moving. There's the flashing yellow arrow, so it doesn't always stop the northbound traffic to allow that southbound left turn to happen. And as we head north, in the background, the queuing was back to here, back to 36th. The queuing is now significantly further to the north. Here's the, the Montessori School access point. They have that ability to make the left turn out of the two-way left-turn median, but the vehicles aren't stopped right in front of them, in front of the school also. As we head north, we kind of had to get this right-turn lane in pretty tight with some of the right-of-way on the east side, but we were able to get that northbound right-turn lane in. And now you've got your southbound vehicles that we were seeing queued up to 228. They're no longer queued up. So it's really increasing the capacity of the 32nd Way intersection that provides the biggest benefit to the corridor for vehicular operations.
Okay, now I'm going to look forward to, I'm going to set up the next simulation. This is just looking at the geometry of a roundabout at Clahani and then at 32nd as well. And again, to highlight that the southbound is on the right of this image coming into the intersection. We have two lanes in the, in the roundabout here, and so that's a little bit different. We have shifted the roundabout, we've shifted the intersection to the east to avoid the bridge abutment because we don't want to fix that bridge. Southeast 32nd Way, you can see that, you can see it compared to the old one, some of the improvements. We have the northbound right-turn slip lane, and then we also have two southbound lanes entering the intersection that's improving the circulation.
All right. So let's go ahead and get that one started. So as we head northbound, the vehicles approaching the roundabout are moving a little bit more slowly in the roundabout than they were in the signal. We're intentionally slowing vehicles down because you can't hit a roundabout at 35, 40 miles an hour. The corridor in the middle is roughly the same, so I'm going, is the same. So we'll jump up to the north end here. So the roundabout at 32nd Way, again, clears the traffic from in front of the, the Montessori School driveways, and we still have a little bit more. And we still have a little bit more in here in front of the firehouse. There's a little bit more in the, a little bit more queuing in the westbound direction than under the signalized version, and a little bit more coming southbound. The roundabout here just is not capable of handling quite as much volume as the signalized intersection is. That's in a lot due to the right-of-way constraints and the environmental constraints on the corners here. But it does address that southbound queuing. It doesn't stretch up to 228th. It's shorter than it is out there today, but there will still be some friction approaching the roundabout.
Okay, and so this leads to the recommendation from the preliminary engineering analysis. Again, three-lane section, that's not the issue. We recommend the three-lane section. A signal at Southeast 32nd way for the reasons that the simulation shows and Josh described. Signal at Southeast 37th place, replace the temporary signal at 42nd. And because the roundabout traffic operations-wise is better at Kohani, we're leading that way, but we want to reserve the right to bring that back at the 30% design should we go forward and really work with the school district for elementary school number 16 and see what works best considering their circulation. We haven't, we've had informal meetings. We haven't had a formal submittal from them yet, but it's going to be coming soon. Should we go on from here? We would continue on the schedule, 30% designed, final design. And at this point, we're welcoming feedback and questions from council.
Okay. Councilmember Ritchie?
So I think my takeaway is that you guys got a pretty good grip on what's going on. Just capacity aside, you know, I think that it's incredibly important that this road, this is a major, the major arterial on the south side of the city. I mean, there's a ton of people that take that to get to 90 every day. So myself and councilmember Ross specifically. So I think what jumps out to me is, you know, the idea of looking at Phase 2, you're right, the 30, the Kohani, the main entrance, right across the street from whatever that apartment complex is you turn, if you're going straight out, whatever that is up the hill there. I'm sorry, I don't remember the name. But as you turn left going towards the IFC intersection, our four corners, Maple Valley has its four corners, we have ours, right? That four-corner intersection has that segment there. We're going to need some sort of interlocal agreement with the King County folks. Has there been any? Let me put it this way, this is incredibly important to do, but it is really important that we do it like all together at some point, and we're like right-hand, left-hand, working all together. And we've got a plan, because it would really be a bummer just to do one, and then suddenly we're up against some sort of hard no from, say, King County or some other entity. Somebody looks like they want to talk. I'll stop, sorry.
Yeah, I'll mention, perhaps Andrew would want to step in, but that second phase is on the six-year tip. We only have, our right-of-way ends at 48th, and so we don't have that last little bit. We want to complete that last little bit to make sense for the corridor. And I don't know if anything has been done at that point, up to that point with Isaquah.
What can we do? I mean, I think that's, it is, I'm sorry, it's not King County, it's Isaquah, thank you. We have another problem with King County in the north end, that's another issue. What can we do? I mean, is there something that you, I mean, you guys, I'm sure, work in this kind of field, these kind of streets ending in one jurisdiction or another. What can we do as a council and as a city to have those conversations? If they haven't happened already, where do we go? And what are the kind of things we should be talking to them about? And when do we do that?
I can step in on that one. We have had discussions with the Public Works Director of Isaquah, and there has been interest between the city of Isaquah and past discussions with the city of Sammamish in regard to right-aways, specifically Isaquah Pine Lake, but also 42nd. In the future, it's continuing to work with both, you know, with the city and our, and, you know, council members and mayor to kind of work on a solution, interlocal, whatever negotiation, whatever thing we can do to work with the right-aways and work towards those improvements.
Just add one thing. The reason it jumps out to me is, and I know, I'm assuming councilmember Ross would have the same experience, that there's like a bus stop right there, and there's a new neighborhood. There was an old farm that was up on top of the hill there, on the south side there, that was just taken out and a whole new neighborhood was put up there. So you got like a school bus stop. And the school bus does pull out, and there's condos up there, too. But there are several school bus stops right along there, and there are pullouts there, but kids and all that stuff, it's getting much, much, much more difficult, just from a safety perspective. I don't even know, I'm not, the timing is the timing. That's a secondary thing for me. But from a safety perspective, kids, school buses, so anything we can do to take into consideration as we're planning that Phase 2, and I know we're not talking about that, but just thinking down the road, as we look at those school bus stops, there's a lot of kids that just jump out. And the, you know, the King Metro, the King County Metro takes, those are those stops, too. And you've got a lot of unprotected bus shelters, and it's dark, and the lighting. So just want to put that out there, that that safety, to me, is the overriding concern for everything you're doing. And I think you hit the nail on the head, so thank you for that.
Councilmember Hornish.
Yes, thanks. First of all, I got a question and some thoughts real quick. The fish pass, these culverts, I think you said you were told that we would be doing that? Who told us and who's paying for that? And how many fish do we have that would actually pass those culverts?
Okay, I'll answer that. There's three stream crossings. One of them's Laughing Jacobs. One's called Stream C that goes into Meadowleaf. Those two at least appear to be, you know, fish-bearing. They need to be a soft-bottom fish passage. And this is from discussions with Department of Fish and Wildlife. And so that's their recommendation. Now, there's another one called Stream S1 that goes from the Kohani Pond through, under the Kohani Bridge on the west side of Isquaw Pine Lake Road. That one has been kind of impounded with the different ponds and everything, and we're getting, we're getting a little bit of pushback that they want that to be fish-passable. For practical reasons, we think that's an impossibility. And that, furthermore, we've done a downstream analysis that shows that there's fish barrier downstream. So in our opinion, it's impossible that fish would be up there. But it's a little bit of a heavy lift to get them to agree that there will never be fishing there again, even with a downstream obstruction, and even though that the ponds of Kohani have basically impounded that and changed the situation there.
Councilmember, to step in, it is the Department of Fish and Wildlife that are making the requirements to switch out those culverts to a fish-passable. Also, the tribes step in and make those recommendations as well, to the point where we are kind of bound by requirements in this case.
That's, yeah, and I was kind of going there with the court case and everything in my mind, but I was just trying to figure out who was driving the boat on that to confirm. So I'm actually going to kind of go to the recommendations or the things that you need from us. I like the, I mean, I think the three-lane and the preliminary design you guys done, and your recommendations, I kind of like. The thing I'm struggling with is if we, if you get general directions from us tonight to go to the next step of this design, I don't know how it fits into all our other projects and when and how and timing, and what, do we have other higher priorities, like Sahale, for example? I have a lot of questions in there, not just to this one road, but to the whole city, and what priorities do we really need to be thinking about for this city? And I think that's our job as council. It's not your job as engineers to design. I like the design that you've done. I'd like to give you the go-ahead, but I'm not sure it's the right timing.
Councilmember Stewart?
All right. Well, first of all, I want to say I'm really jealous because you get to work with really cool software and make cars go on simulations. I love that. But I'm really glad that councilmember Hornish brought this up. I guess my biggest concern is this seems like a really big project to take on without having a transportation master plan completed and to understand how this fits into the whole city. Because this is a pretty big connection point, particularly once Isquaw Falls City Road project is done, and how that's going to alter traffic behavior and people maybe wanting to cut through and take Isquaw Falls City Road down as opposed to 228th, all the way into Isquaw. So I just want to make sure that before we lock in on something, that we, you know, don't do something this big in isolation. And I really feel like this is where maybe the right question to be asking council is, how can we speed up the transportation master plan work so that, you know, what can we do to support you guys to do that? Because we really do need to understand how all of this fits together. And particularly around, you know, you discussed multimodal and you brought up transit. I really do think that understanding how transit fits into this is also a really critical element, not just, as councilmember Ritchie brought up, not just in terms of transit for King County Metro or sound transit, but also how are we addressing things like school buses? I think that it's really important to understand how can we have pullouts and things like that. I think it's a safety issue. I think it's a huge issue in terms of flow. I know if there's a school bus there, everybody's got to stop anyway, but having the ability to kind of pull off the road a little bit can still make a difference. And especially where you have it divided, you wouldn't necessarily have to stop both directions of traffic with a school bus. So I just, I feel like this is a great design. I love to see how that can impact. I love to see that. I also have concerns that, you know, 2035 sounds really far away, but it's really not. And so again, also understanding what projections we're taking into account there. I mean, we're just getting started at, you know, across King County. We're not calling it Buildable Lands anymore, but whatever the new term is for the Buildable Lands report, to really understand, you know, how does this project fit in, not just between now and 2035, but potentially even beyond that? Because we kind of only get one shot at this. Whatever we build here, we're probably not going to get to go back and expand it again later, nor should we be looking at that, you know, unless it's much, much later. But I feel like we should be making sure that the three lanes is truly enough and that we've taken into consideration all those other factors. So I like it. I like what you've done. I love to see how we can improve that. I guess one question following on for councilmember Hornish is, if we have to kind of take a step back and look at how this fits in longer term, are there any things we should be looking at shorter term, particularly around 32nd? Because I think we have performance issues, right? Capacity issues. We also have some potential safety issues with the fire station. So maybe that's something that we should be looking at is, what's that longer term? Do you know how this fits in with the transportation master plan? But are there, within the next couple of years, things that maybe, you know, do we look at turning that into a signal from a roundabout or something like that to take more immediate action, to bring relief to some of those areas? So those would be some of my concerns. I also wanted, did I hear you mention that you would, and I know you haven't really done the analysis, but I thought I heard you say that Phase 2 would be potentially more of a five-lane option that you would be looking at?
Yeah, that's correct.
So that's great. And I guess one question is, it appears from the simulation that a signal at 32nd would in fact improve the sort of performance or safety for the fire station as well, wouldn't it? Because they'd have that ability to set the signal and create an opportunity for them to come out. Would that be correct?
Yeah, there are preemptions that they could do where it would preempt the signal to go green northbound, and it would flush the traffic in front of their access point.
Right.
There was one other thing that you mentioned that I can address, a concern about what happens when Isquaw Falls City gets widened. So the analysis for 2035 is assuming that Isquaw Falls City is constructed. So that improvement is in place, so there is that shift of traffic in response to that improvement that is already assumed in this analysis.
And what, what sort of volume projections are we using for 2035? So it's great we have that in there, so hopefully we've got the new traffic patterns, and we're assuming, oh, hey, that works better, so more people are going to cut through. But what do we have in terms of assumptions of growth or volumes?
The currently adopted city's 2035 model is what we have used for the, for the analysis for the volumes.
Excellent. One other thing I do like about the signal at 32nd as well is the pedestrian safety. While I'm a huge fan of roundabouts, I know people don't always know how to use them correctly, but they really are way more efficient when designed properly. The one thing that I have experienced is pedestrian crossing at roundabouts seems a little dicier sometimes. And so particularly since it's right there at the school, I do like the idea of a signal as opposed to the roundabout for the pedestrian safety. That roundabout on the backside of East Lake sometimes gives me heart failure when I see people crossing there, because I don't think cars are expecting the pedestrians in the same way as they do at a light. I don't know if there are other things we can do about that, but I do like that idea. So, thank you.
We've got a laundry list of questions going on here. Deputy Mayor Moran.
Okay, well, one, I really like your, I really like the design. I like your recommendations. I don't think, I don't feel waiting for the TMP is a big deal because I don't see wanting to go four lanes, five lanes on any road in our city. I wouldn't want to put five lanes on Sahale. I wouldn't want to put five lanes over there. I wouldn't, I just don't see that. I don't like roundabouts. But I do like the idea of having a light put in that roundabout by the fire station, because that is a mess over there. That roundabout is just too small, and it's just, that gets caught. Somebody said you can't hit a roundabout at 35 miles an hour. Yes, you can. And I just know you can.
You shouldn't. Let me rephrase that. You shouldn't.
Now, one of the things I had a question on, and this has to go with long-term maintenance, and this probably isn't, it isn't a question on design, it probably is our road standards. But this goes back to, this goes to the design of all the greenery and the trees and the, because, and I'm going to sound like Ron Hayworth here, one of the old councilmembers, big old grouch. First, you're going to have to water that stuff, then you got to take care of that stuff, and then you got to sew. I'm, is that, I'm just wondering, what, long-term wise, does that do cost-wise? As I'm seeing all these raised, medium, raised bed trees, flower beds, blah, blah, blah. And all I keep thinking of is ka-ching, 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 maintenance costs.
That is something we, excuse me, that is something we do look into our designs. We're doing with Isquaw Falls City, Southeast Fourth. It does increase our maintenance design requirements. It does increase water consumption for irrigation. We have been limiting the type of plants we've been planting on the new designs in direct kind of a reaction to what we've seen on 228th and the droughts. A lot of the plants that are dying and the replacements, so we're using more grasses, more drought-tolerant, things that require less maintenance, especially with the cost of maintenance and landscaping going up. So when we do our design, we do incorporate our maintenance department to review, bring in their input, how we can lower long-term maintenance. But that is an option we have to, or a factor we have to take into account in our design.
Mr. City Manager, you just put your tent card down. Do you have a comment?
Well, I wanted to go back to the question that was asked, and let me see if I can put some of this in perspective for you, and I'll ask these folks to correct this if I've misstated any of this thing. We are working on multiple fronts because you have a number of issues, and as I've talked to you many times, we're somewhat behind the curve. This does get the design work done, so if there's a piece that comes up that we need to work on, you'd have that opportunity in doing that. You won't be moving forth with the construction of this project until at least we get Isquaw Falls City Road done, because you don't want to do the whole south end at one time. We are working on the TMP, and again, you've got multiple groups now doing different work for us, because all this stuff is coming forward. It'd be nice to be able to stop and just do one at a time, but I don't think you have that luxury at this point. We will be talking shortly, as soon as we get some modeling back, about some of those smaller fixes we talked about that may provide some relief to Sahale. If not, somewhere down the road, we're going to have to begin to look at Sahale and what can be done there. That's a whole nother engineering project that we haven't gotten started on as of yet. So again, you want to get these designs in place, because you never know when the opportunities come up, when you might want to sit down with the city of Isquah and begin to talk about how this road proceeds. So it doesn't hurt to get this, this piece of the work out of the way. You can always amend it if you have to, but this stuff's going to have a pretty good shelf life for quite some time until we can hopefully find some funding and move forward. Plus, we got to work this stuff into our TMP, which can also give us some, some relief as well, or I should say, our TIP, so.
Okay, so a couple of questions and thoughts, and I appreciate kind of framing that for council. I do have a little bit of heartburn moving forward on this project, specifically because through our own concurrency policy, there's not a failure on this road. The failures are over on Sahale, and I am cognizant of
The failures are over on Sahale, and I am cognizant of resources that we have for staff, and we can't have them working everything simultaneously. And the point you brought up that I had also pecked out, which is, we cannot do this project while Isqoah Falls City Road is being done. And because there is inevitably a Phase Two to that project[615.79][615.79][phone ringing] We lost somebody.[618.29][618.29][phone ringing] I, I don't think we want to spend resources down there necessarily right now until we figure out what's going on with the north end of the plateau where we do have identified failures that we have to fix. And as far as the TIP, this project has been on the TIP for quite a long time. So I, I say my comments with the thought that we clearly need to do something with Isqoah Pine Lake Road. I'm actually surprised that through our concurrency, and I think it's because we did that 1.1 instead of a 1.0, that we don't have a failure frankly on Isqoah Pine Lake Road. Otherwise, if we'd used a 1.1, a 1.0, we would have a failure on, on the road. But as it stands now, we don't. So diverting resources from a, to a project that is not failing, away from one that is failing, where we don't have any resources yet, I think would be a little bit of a mistake. I do appreciate the fact that if we move forward with this, I want to know from staff that we're not going to be tying up, you know, limited personnel on a project that we know is going to be shelved for a little while because there is no way we're touching this one for years to come, knowing that we're supposed to start Phase One of Isqoah Falls City Road this spring. That's going to hopefully wrap up 2021. We haven't started any design work for Phase Two of Isqoah Falls City Road, and that is all going to come in advance of Isqoah Pine Lake Road. So we've got staff obviously working on that project. We know we're going to have to have people running up to the north end, too. And there's only so many fires we can put out at the same time. So I, that's my concern in, in moving this one forward. However, I'm, I'm okay if staff has bandwidth to work on these projects, knowing that we can shelf it and then pull it right back off and we haven't wasted any, any resources doing that. So if there's a place that staff can say, hey, this is a good place to kind of wrap stuff up. I don't know if it feels like we're kind of in the middle of something here, and I wouldn't want to, you know, put something up on the shelf that then someone's got to figure out where the heck they left off. And I want to put it on the shelf to pick it off, and you're like, okay, I know exactly where we need to go from here. So it appreciates staff's input on, to that end. I'll stop and let you go while I have a few other things.
I don't think that we're wasting resources again, and I think we do, I mean, it's, staff is definitely stretched, but again, with various consultants, we are working on multiple projects, so I think we do have the bandwidth to do that. As you well know, if we started today, whatever we do towards the north is going to be a longer range project. So again, I don't think you'd want to stop doing this piece, and we might, as opposed to diverting resources, I think we're going to need to look at how we might be able to expand resources to add these other pieces in. But I think all of this type of planning work and engineering work is good to have done, and you never know when the opportunity is going to present itself for us to move forward. So we want to, we want to keep pushing and add these other things as we get the opportunities to do those things.
Sure. I would be remiss in not, you know, bringing forward the fact that, you know, these are sitting on our tip unfunded. And, you know, we have Sahale issue also unfunded. So there is a lot of unfunded talk going on in here, and that is going to be another council discussion that we'll have to have.
It is.
How are we going to do this project? And that is another thing I wanted to ask about, which is when we passed our last tip, and I, I was looking for it, but I can't find it off the top of my head, what that Phase One project was. I think the full buildout of the corridor was $49 million, and that was Phase One and Phase Two. I don't recall what they were separated out. The culverts, I'm assuming the culverts weren't something that was identified? And so that would be an additional cost that we would have to add into. Is that fair?
That is correct.
Okay.
We've been looking at those. Obviously, as part of this design, we discover new costs, new prod, new additions to the project that we didn't, you know, that wasn't anticipated when they did the initial estimate. Culverts.
Light at 37th.
Light at 37th. Well, that was still there, but the light, light at 37th wasn't, the 42nd was.
Right.
But little additions here and there, right-of-way. Right-of-way is always a big one. If we do the roundabout, and I think previously this project was anticipated to end prior to the intersection. Phase Two is going to do the intersection of Kohani, so right-of-way dedications, right-of-way acquisitions. Roundabouts take more, but we do have a school that we're working with, so we have some negotiations to work with and have discussions with them on that, that particular design as they come in. So yes, the, the costs are fluctuating, but obviously the longer we wait, the higher the costs go up, so.
Absolutely. And I think, I'm not opposed to doing design work as long as it, like I said, it can be shelved and then taken back off, knowing that there's a lot of moving parts going on right now. The other thing that I would suggest that the city is messaging out as we're having these discussions on it and as we're going out to the community is, this isn't happening next year, right? Because there may be an expectation among the community if we're starting to talk about Isqoah Pine Lake Road that we're like moving forward with the project. And it's years away from happening because we're working on Isqoah Falls City Road. And I think that's really important, that the community understands. Because I know people are concerned about Isqoah Pine Lake Road. We've been hearing about it for a long time. So just giving them a reference point for that timeline, I think, is critical. And right now, the timeline that we're using says 2021, and that's clearly not a reality considering Isqoah Falls City Roads project.
All your major road projects, they're quite lengthy. They're years in the making, and, and the planning starts early, and then you have to identify the funding once you get there, and then you get into the actual construction. So no one should expect these things to be here tomorrow because it's just not going to happen that way.
Absolutely. Okay, Councilmember Valderrama.
Yes, and unfortunately, you both stole my thunder, but I agree with that if we can do it, and the city manager believes that we can do both projects, that we should go forward with this design. Additionally, I think that staff does have a good grip. I will point out, I'm in Washington DC, and there are lots of circles here over 35 mile an hour with pedestrian crossings in our nation's capital. That said, I, I would like to make sure, going back to what Councilmember Ritchie said about making sure we have discussions with Isqoah on their portion of it so that we're coordinated. I would also point out that we have asked for money and received money from the state on those roads in the south, and we've just gone back to ask for Isqoah Falls City for another $1.35 million. So if we can balance the designs and get those moving, as the city manager said, and he's a lot closer to it, and still be able to address those considerations, I say go full speed ahead.
Councilmember Stewart?
Bring back money if you're coming back from Washington.[1060.83][1060.83][laughing]
Yeah, go back to that. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. City Manager. I appreciate that perspective, and so maybe moving forward with the designs, at least to a certain point, isn't necessarily a bad thing if you guys can do that in parallel. The other thing I think we should really think about again is, you know, what about looking at just 30, the intersection at 32nd, right? We've identified through this modeling that the real challenges are the endpoints. And it's not to say we shouldn't do the whole corridor and there aren't a lot of issues there, but 30, that intersection at 32nd has a number of not only traffic issues but potential safety issues. And so I do think moving forward with some of this design so that we can consider when we could, is there an opportune moment? Is there, you know, I don't know how long that intersection would take, but is that a project we could do in a summer when the traffic volumes are lower so we can correct that? Because it is at a school, there are safety concerns, and I would, you know, I think that's where we have to start getting creative instead of, you know, maybe taking on some of these large projects that are years and years in the making and have a lot of disruption. Are there more sort of surgical fixes that we can work on in parallel with other things that can help really provide some relief in certain areas? And again, particularly in the safety. And Deputy Mayor Moran, I know you were concerned about some of the, the greenery, but as I understand it, one, you discussed it's a traffic calming technique, which I think is really important. I just find it so interesting that our biggest issue is people speeding, but then we're talking about it's too congested. I just struggle sometimes with how those two things cohabitate, but I appreciate having some of that traffic calming so that when there isn't congestion, people aren't speeding through there. I also think it's important to, to find, to Andrew's point, to find the, the sort of lower maintenance things, but to still have those, those areas because it does help with stormwater management as well. If we just pave over everything, then we have all impervious surface. So having those medians that have plants in them and having the, the calming and the safety on the sides when you start talking about bike lanes and pedestrians, it's a safety issue, and it also helps with your stormwater management. Not to mention the, the positive, there are actually positive human effects of having greenery around, so, you know, there's, there's that as well. So it just, well, it does. I mean, there, there are studies that have proven that by having that greenery, it, it improves people's, you know, it lessens depression, it improves, you know, their health and well-being.
Just come look at my driveway.
Because it has grass in the middle or something?
Green.[1223.33][1223.33][laughing]
I'm not sure I know what that means. But, but so to that end, I would say that I'm in favor of continuing to move forward with the designs, and again, maybe a particular emphasis on the intersection at 32nd.
Councilmember Ross, since you haven't spoken.
Well, I had about three minutes, but Councilmember Stewart reduced about 30 seconds. Thanks, you, well said, it really was. I think it is important for us to look at the designs and find out what some quick, high-impact fixes are that are not very expensive, that may fit into. We can still focus on other corridors and segments other than Isqoah Pine Lake in its totality, but let's look at it from perspective of rework. We want to do something opportune that does not require rework when we fully build out that road. So those are types of opportunities I'd like to look at.
Okay. Councilmember Ritchie?
I'll be the third person to support Councilmember Stewart's idea of trying to be surgical about this. I'll also say that, you know, we spent quite a bit of time building out this concurrency model, and I would hope that we can recognize that going from one concurrency failure to another is, it's, it's kind of legislating by exception, right? We're finding problems and we're addressing. We're finding problems, we're addressing, rather than looking at a more holistic approach. What I thought, that's what the purpose of the TMP was, a larger view of where we're trying to go as a whole city. And I think that part of the reason we have these questions, these issues, and we don't know where we're going, is because we really don't have that, that larger, you know, San Mamish-wide view of what we could be doing from a, a transportation master plan perspective. So I support moving forward on that, and I appreciate you guys already doing that. Last thing I'll say is that there are about, I've heard, I just from walking in before it was developed or it's being developed, the Connor Jarvis, what Maple Leaf, whatever they're calling it now, that, the Connor Jarvis Farm area. It's 125 homes, and 115? Well, I heard 125 from, it doesn't matter, 115 or 125. Who's going to quibble over 10 homes?[1352.13][1352.13][laughing] Anyway, I think that the point here is that that is a significant impact. I mean, I don't know if there's a larger development going in in the city. If there is, I'm not sure where it is. That's a huge development going in that's directly like adjacent, connecting to this road, that's going to impact this road like, I don't know, soon, right? So as much as it may not be failing now, and we may not see failures from a concurrency perspective, 115, 125, single-family homes with kids walking the Sunny Hills, that is a real-life safety issue when we do not have connected sidewalks and we don't have crosswalks. And these are the things that I think we could address on TMP, and I think we should look at those things as a much higher, in my mind at least, a much higher urgency that whether or not the road is failing right now or not from a concurrency model that we built, that we're applying our numbers on, that, that development's going in, those kids are coming, they're going to be walking up and down those streets, and what are we going to do about it like right now or in the next few years before this road is going to be built? So I, I think it's impaired upon us as a council to have a plan to deal with that and to be ready for that. And if this gets moved up or down or on our list, on our tip, that is the kind of impact that we could look at. Hey, there's a brand-new bunch of homes right there and a bunch of kids, and hey, there's a new, you know, a new elementary school that's going to be built. All those things are going to be happening right along this corridor. And I'll just add one more thing, and I'll stop. Please, I'm, I'll say this, that when we look at where we can do things, right? We can do things on Isqoah Falls City Road. We can do things on Isqoah Pine Lake Road, whether they're larger projects or smaller projects. When we get to Sahale, we don't have a plan right now. We don't know what we can or can't do. There's, we've, there's been a lot of talk, there's been a lot of frustration, and I know we need to do something there, but we don't have that yet. So if we are going to shelve this, and we are going to look at our concurrency failures as the reason we are going to do something, and we're going to set safety aside, then, or at least laterally, right? We're never setting it aside, but laterally, putting concurrency as our only thing we're looking at, then we probably should look at what we're going to do at Sahale Road and, and put that at the top and just deal with it, and let everything else trickle down and go from there, if that's what we're going to do. But if not, then I would encourage us to, you know, ask this, the, the staff and the consult to move forward on this plan and to recognize its importance, and we can do something on this.
Let me indicate, too, that that's a great segue to our next item. So if we can wrap this up shortly, I'll try to get you out of here by 10 o'clock because we are going to be talking about Sahale, but we're also going to be talking about focus across a wide range of issues. And I will say there is one potential larger project that you have, and that would be the Town Center if we can find a way to move that forward as well, so.
Okay, so Councilmember Hornish.
Real quick, I like the idea of maybe doing surgical fixes for now because I'm going to, I'm going to try to do, use an analogy. When I was younger, if I was going to stay in one place and I want to build a house, I know I'm going to have a family, I want to build three to four bathrooms, but me and my wife, we only need one right now, and we don't have enough money. It sounds a lot like our city right now. So I think we need to stay focused on what we need to do right now. Larry, I appreciate the concept that, you know, we can go ahead and move, move forward with the planning, but then you've got all this public input and nothing happens. On the flip side of that, we could stop the planning and pick up the planning again once we get these other priorities done, too. Now, if I was building a house, I would want to plan and have the blueprints probably for all three or four bathrooms planned and ready, to your point, but I don't have to, and I might change it even between when I move in with my wife and me and before I have the kids and everything else, but then it changes. So I'm a little bit more inclined to pick up the, the design later, once we know we want to move forward with the actual construction versus doing the design and then hoping that we can get it all done and do everything else. So trying to be quick, sorry.
So I think what I've heard from everybody is that we're okay with doing this, and then we kind of had a shift a little bit for maybe doing some, you know, surgical-type stuff. But I do have a question, I was, I was struggling to find it anywhere. What is the current level of service at that intersection for the roundabout at Isqoah Pine Lake Road and 32nd? Because I can't find it on here, so it's clearly not failing, but I'm curious if what, the modeling is showing we have a problem there, but if our level of service... So is this current?
So this is for 2018 conditions.
But is that using 2018 traffic counts? Because when, when we did our stuff, we were using 2016 traffic counts.
In the concurrency models, this intersection today was meeting standards. In, sorry, in the six-year concurrency, the intersection meets city standards.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just trying to understand what we're looking at. I, I recognize you, you talked about CIDRA and how it thinks that there's something going on, but it is not the reality of our actual roundabout, and then that doesn't then mirror what we're saying the functioning, we're saying it's an A, right? But it's not an A.
Correct.
That gives me some indigestion right there.
So this is a grown-up, real, real wannabe roundabout?
Yes.
Is that, is that a singular hiccup we have? I mean, with looking at some of our intersections as far as how they're actually functioning? Because I think, you know, not to back the truck up too far here, but we had some, you know, some discussions about certain intersections, and we had a, we had a little heartburn over the Northeast Eighth and Inglewood Hill, or Northeast Eighth, sorry, and 244th one, where everyone's like, ah, it's, you know, it's awful, and it was an A, too. And so, you know, I'm just trying to understand CIDRA and the roundabouts and letters, and we're talking about spending a lot of money on an A, which is clearly not really an A based on what you're viewing in the field.
So from my perspective, what we see in the field is what's happening.
I would agree with you.
So it's not level of service A, even though the equations say it is. At this specific location, it's due to the geometry of the intersection where our analysis software can't handle the geometry that is antiquated.
Okay. Is that, is that something that we have at other roundabouts in the city, or is this one a, an anomaly considering its geometry? I mean, I realize that you probably don't normally put a roundabout at the bottom of a big hill anyway, but is this one an anomaly in San Mamish?
I can't answer that one. I haven't gone to this level of detail at the other roundabouts in the city. So I can't, I can't give you an answer to that one.
So to circle back, and Andrew, I know you've got something here. I think the question has now become, you know, do we go ahead with this full package of design work, or do we look at this from a more strategic standpoint, knowing that resources are finite, and that, you know, if we can make, you know, surgical, you know, interventions here that are helpful for moving traffic flow, we might be able to delay the inevitable, which is, we're not doing anything right here for a while, at least not on the full package deal.
So hopefully I can answer, or touch into a couple of those comments. We, in regard to the roundabout at 32nd, we do know that it's, it's undersized, it is an old design standard. It is an anomaly compared to some of the other ones. The ones on Fourth are current designs, the ones on Northeast Eighth and Inglewood are a larger circle, they operate. We don't have the problems that we do at this intersection. I know in regard to, when we look at these tables, and we're dealing with the HCM, and how they associate the level of service intersections, I believe it was touched upon that roundabouts are kind of a different case.
Yep.
Compared to signalized intersections. And that is where, when we do our designs, we do, we really rely on going farther and doing those simulations, because it brings out information that the standard formulas don't bring out. So to touch on what Josh said, the simulations give us more representation of what's being done out there, or what's being seen and experienced out there today. So that's where we emphasize our designs on, and work on ultimate improvements that deal with today and in the future. In regard to design moving forward, whether we do small sections, small little, you know, surgical strikes and doing little intersections, or we do the whole corridor, it's kind of the same effort. We have the consultants, we can design everything. I think you, you did mention it is going to be at least two years before we can actually do any construction. Because of Iscoa Falls City going out, that locks in that whole southern area of doing any other work, because we don't want to impact any other detours, any other traffic patterns, until that project is done. But it does give us an opportunity to move forward, get us the blueprints that Councilman Hornish mentioned, so we will be ready to construct either portions, or the whole project when we need it.
And let me, let me tie on that, too. One of the issue, I mean, it depends how you want to go about things. If, if the object is to define this project, go find funding for that project, move forward, you know, it's kind of pay-as-you-go one at a time. What I would, and again, I'm not going to be here, but one of the things I would prefer is get these design and the information, figure out the estimates on cost, and then I can go to work on figuring out where we get resources. And that's not just for this project, but for all the things we have to do. So you, then you can look at a broader spectrum of projects you may be able to do, but I can't do that unless I know kind of what we're talking about in terms of dollars. If not, I'm just making them up, and that doesn't take anywhere. So somehow we have to identify what we need, then we have to figure out where we're going to get that, and then we go forward.
Okay. So we've gone at least two rounds. We've got round three going on here. But do you guys feel like you have a general idea from council where to go? Okay, good.
I just, I just have a question. In, in talking about doing designs, because I, I think I like the idea of having that blueprint, you, you don't even know what surgically to do unless you really have that full design, because you don't want to design an intersection, and then you realize that your full design is something different, and now you have to go back and redo. So to Councilmember Ross's point, we don't want to do something and have to redo it. So on some level, you have to take the full design to a certain point before you can even do a piece of it, construction-wise. The other concern that I would have, and I don't know how we address this, is, and I don't even know how much more buildable land there is along there, but in delaying doing designs for a lot of these projects, are we in danger of, you know, things get built, and now you can't put a lane there, because now there's a house? And if we have these designs done, does that help us if someone wants to come along and build, and we can say, yeah, but you got to leave this much space, because potentially we're going to put a lane there? And that would be the other, in my mind, the other reason to get moving on a lot of these designs, so that we can make sure we don't build houses where we may need to have lanes. And to your point, Deputy Mayor, I'm not proposing necessarily having five lanes, but whether it be pullouts, or right-or-left turn lanes, all that kind of stuff, I think that's part of the challenge at that intersection at 32nd, is we don't have enough right-of-way to build the roundabout potentially the way we want to, because houses are there now. And had we had this design completed, we may not have allowed the houses to be there, because we would have known that we needed it for a roundabout. So I want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're getting to that point where there aren't a whole lot of options on where to put these lanes, and we should make sure we know where those potential lanes are. So I, I know I asked a lot of questions there, but do the designs help us prevent that from happening?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
We had a preliminary design for a roundabout at 32nd, where we were able to ask for right-of-way from the development in the corner. Is it enough? It's tight. You know, with what the designs we're looking at now, with the current designs, it's, it's really challenging to fit it. If we have a proper design, we have it, we're, we're ready to go, we can hold developers to giving them proper direction on what type of right-of-ways we need, what improvements, what frontage improvements that they can build, similar to what we did with Connor Jarvis. They, they constructed the frontage improvements along their whole development for a three-lane section. And just now, how do we deal with the intersections? The school, having a design going in with discussions with the school district in regard to that elementary school, help, would help us out a lot.
Okay.
So they do, they help us out immensely.
So I feel like that's just more reason, again, to, you know, if you guys can do this work in parallel, that we get the design work completed, irrespective of when we can do that construction, having those designs in hand helps us with that future planning, so we don't put buildings and houses where we potentially need to have lanes or other, other right-of-way for, for whatever reason. So I, I like that idea of moving forward and giving us options as we look down the road. And to Councilmember Ritchie's point, and I think Deputy Mayor Moran, you've said it before, the, the number-one role of government is public safety. So to the extent where, again, if we want to call them surgical operations here, we may need to look at, at sidewalks and things, because if we do have 100-plus homes where we're going to have another, you know, 50, 100 kids, however many that's going to be, walking to that school, we may want to, again, have those designs to a certain point in our back pocket. So if we start to have concerns, we can move quickly to address any. I, I don't like the idea of leaving lingering public safety issues out there, so.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
10:15.
Just one quick one. When Connor Jarvis had to put in that plat, did they not have to put in sidewalks all the way? Okay.
There's sidewalks there.
They did put sidewalks in front of their development, all the way to the end, and then they also extended a pedestrian pathway to the north to the next intersection, where there's existing sidewalks right by the fire station, but it is just an asphalt pathway with an extruded curb, so.
One last thing, sorry, 10:20. If, if the point of, of doing design work, at least in part, is to preserve potential right-of-way, as I look at a map, the bigger swath that we need to protect is actually on the south end of Phase Two, because most of Phase One already has adjacent development all along it. So I would park that in the back of your mind, that as we're doing this, and what is currently adopted on our tip is a five-lane segment for Phase Two, is that you have development along the west side of Iscoa Pine Lake Road and nothing on the east side. And we'll, if anything comes in there, and I don't pretend to know, looking at Google Maps, what, if there's environmentally sensitive areas in there, but that's where we're going to lose our ability to, to widen the road.
Actually, Mary could probably step in on that one. On the, pretty much on the, on the east side of the road, or a lot of, there's a detention pond system through Kehane, there's multiple ponds.
Well, I'm looking like, almost Phase Two.
And this is all Phase Two. The Phase Two, the ponds for Kehane are all along there. So there's a lot of environmental constraints, and that will have to be dealt with, with that Phase Two. But yes, there's a lot of right-of-way that would need to be taken, or acquired, sorry, for the Iscoa Falls, Phase Two.
Good catch. Okay, let's get on to the next subject.
Do they need what they need?
Yeah, they said they did, yeah. Okay. All right. Let's try and make this as quick as we can.
Stay right here in case there's questions.
Almost got away.
Let me start here while they're bringing this up. I'm, I'm going to do four things this evening. I'm going to give you some introductory comments to the goals and objectives, then I'm going to talk to you a little bit about process, about how we go about adopting these, then I'll give you some general marks, and then I'll address some of the questions and comments that I've received to date. But there's still plenty of opportunity to tie into this. First of all, as you see, this is a pretty large...
It's this button.
Okay.
And that's a pointer, if these are...
Okay, I don't know how it works. I have the power, she even knows behind me. As you see, this is a fairly large body of work, and it's, I know that's a little bit scary when you look at it. But as you well know, this is an organization that has the ability to move on multiple fronts, you have multiple departments. We pulled these goals and objectives together after we were unable to have the retreat. We've taken it from work that is underway now, things you've talked about, things we've heard about, or things that your boards and commissions are, are working on. It's also stated, and we are going to do things, because I don't like touchy-feely goals, like consider this and consider that, because that doesn't take anywhere. You want something, you can kind of measure the end of it the best we can. So with that, you have these, and again, there's no magic to them. You definitely have the ability to help rewrite any of this, or anything that you see in there that you don't like, we can take it out. We may need to talk about it if it's an action we have underway, you can modify it. If there's something that's not in here, feel free, let's discuss that, and we can add it. In terms of a process, this is your first touch on this this evening. And I, mainly this is just an introduction to it, and so as you get a better chance to think about it here over the next week or so, go ahead and, and send in your, your comments to me, and you can do that on track changes, that's probably the easiest way to follow this along. I'm going to bring this back to you at your study session on April the 1st, so that'll be your second touch with it, and we can talk about this again. If at the end of that, we feel comfortable, I can have that on the agenda, well, probably would, would roll that back over, because I couldn't do it after that evening, but on the next agenda. So I'll have it, your third touch will be on your work session on April the 9th, and then hopefully by that time, we will work through this, and I'll have it on your agenda for April the 16th. So you've got plenty of time to add into this, or receive any input and add it to it as well. I think the thing that your goals and objectives do is they help focus your agenda, and I think we've been a little unfocused over the last couple, couple of years, and, and that's led to a kind of race-off and deal with this project, race-off and deal with that project, and not have a, a good sense about what we're trying to do on a broad, broad front. It also helps you, it also helps you evaluate your city manager in terms of the process, what we're getting done, and it helps the manager evaluate staff, because this is going to kind of formulate the work plan for each department as we go through. There's a couple of things that you may want to do with this, and I'm just going to give you an example, and by all means, I just threw this in today, and, and Councilor Hornish and Valderrama, I apologize, I don't know if you have this sitting in front of you, but I will get it to you tomorrow. What you could do, and what I did here, is I took and looked at the goals we had, and with that formulated kind of what the mission of the city may be. And again, I just, just kind of, I threw this together pretty quick, so you may or may not buy in that, and you might want to change it. But looking at what your work plan is, it kind of helps define that mission, and you can also kind of help define your core services. Where that helps you, as you go through a couple of year period, you're going to have a number of folks come to you, because there's always demands of the city, and the question you have to ask yourself, does it fit into that? If not, it may be something that you want to add, but it may be something you say, I'm sorry, next time we, we set goals, we might want to bring that in. It kind of gives you a little bit of buffer as you deal with some of those issues. So with that, I'm going to take you through, hopefully, some of the comments I've received today.
Because I have, Councilmember Hornish, who has a comment right now.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, I was more afterwards.
Okay. Well, you'll be first up then. All right.
Okay, looking at goal number one, and I, I'm not going to walk you through all this, and again, these goal statements were formed after the priorities you set in 2017. If you want to restate these in something a little bit, you know, not Texan, feel free to do that, but I just, I kind of made this fairly, fairly quick. But I did have a question on it, that Councilor Stewart asked, is should there be a task to develop options and preliminary cost estimates or orders of magnitude for projects to correct the existing conditions on Sahali? That's kind of what I was trying to capture in Task One, but I see I didn't do that very well, so I'll go back and try to redraft that, so that'll be a little bit more specific. Moving up to the next ones, you kind of see that I have them underlined, the comments that have come in. Under Task Seven, which is complete design on Sahali Way, 28th Place, and 223rd, the comment is, would like to see the project with King County. I believe that we have an ILA with them on improving, increasing lanes and capacity on Sahali at 202 intersection. And again, we do have a small agreement with them, and that has to do with extending those turn lanes, so. And that, I think, is scheduled sometime here, looking in the spring or summer for that.
Yeah, you put it up for bid, and we didn't get anybody to bid on it originally, is my recollection.
That's right, but the county is actually going to pave that this summer, and so they'll, they'll restrict it at the same time. But it, it won't happen until summer.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, I guess, what I was getting.
Okay. We, we can do that. We can do that. Under Objective Four, the comment was, have we identified tasks under this objective? I can bring you back some, some of the, the kind of bigger-picture stuff, the siding, the engineering, that'll kind of be the next step, and then we can, you know, some of these may change. I should say, too, that as you go through a couple of year period, this has, this document should be a little fluid. Your task, you may have some added as you go through here, and we define some of these projects a little bit more, maybe even, there may be some additional objectives that come and go, because some things are going to get hung up for while you go through a two-year period, and other things, you may have the opportunity to move forth in, in other directions. Under Objective Five, Councilor Valderrama asked, should be work on the town center to establish a transit-oriented development and transit center. I think we do want to talk to them to make sure that it is transit-friendly. Now, again, until we kind of get the siding on sound transit, because that could go elsewhere, it may not become a quote-unquote transit center unless I'm misunderstanding what is being talked about there, which I could be, and that's, that's a question I'd ask Councilor Valderrama.
No, no, the facility is fine.
What was that?
Use of transit facility is the wording with the sign.
Okay. Also asked, have we identified tasks for this objective? And I think it probably was a tap-in there, because it said, I feel like I'm depending on Objective 65, and I haven't found that one yet.
We're going to be here until 12:30.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can get that in there. Also, under Objective Six, there was a comment, can we add something here about working on access to the light rail stop at Merrimore, and how we will improve intersection at East Lakes-Sammamish Parkway and 202 specifically? And we would like to need some familiar tasks for the south end of the city, as well as likely on the south end of 228. We can add some tasks in terms of how we may connect to the light rail stop. Again, that East Lakes-Sammamish Parkway and 202 is outside the city, so again, I'm sure everyone would like, love to have our money to go to that, but we'll want to work on some type of joint partnership to...
Yeah, in the onset, you mentioned this will be something we use for the city manager's goals. So as we go through, a general, general comment is, make sure that if it's prohibited by law today, it's not a fair goal for the city manager. So word it in the tone that is a, make, taking steps towards achieving alternatives and/or... So you've got to be careful, because some of these are very aspirational.
Under Objective Seven, comment is, review and determine funding plans for transit and transportation. Whoop, about there? Need to move on. Yep. And we can, we can add something in there for that. I think that was kind of getting to what the mayor was asking about here a while back here on. Then we're going to go down to, let's see. Skip one.
I think it was back, it was back to the previous slide.
Yep. Under Task Seven for Goal Two, is that right? Yeah. Councilor Valderrama asked, Objective Two, Task Eighty indicates, develop strategy for allocation... Councilor Valderrama asked, "Objective 2, Task 8, indicates develop strategy for allocation of future housing." That's probably one you'll want to discuss some at point as we get these put together. But I'll leave that in there for the time being as a comment and you'll have plenty of time to discuss that. Under Objective 6, "Complete Phase 2, update a subdivision and zoning code to SMC Title 19A and 20." There was a question, "Do we have any insights what these are, or is this something high level?" Basically has to do with land use proceedings, code noticing, some of the approval criteria and land use, that sort of thing. And so we can, you know.
That's that big overhaul, the code that we're doing, for development code.
And, and the question below kind of comes in with Task 3. And that, that has kind of similar type stuff, but has to do directed at the comp plan amendment that you're doing. So one kind of has to do with land use proceedings, other has to do with your comp plan updates.
I guess my question there was, it sounds like there's stuff you guys are working on. How do we get some insight as to what, a little more, or do we wait until you guys bring it forward?
Yeah, it'll come forward and again, a lot of this stuff, the bigger stuff, you'll want to do a study session on it before you move it on to your agenda. And Mr. Thomas has already given you a list, as you recall, those things that are working their way through the Planning Commission. So that kind of gives you an indicator of what the Planning Commission is working on and that stuff is in the pipeline to come to you.
Okay, thanks.
Kind of gives you some dates on that as well. Also, the comment regarding, didn't see anything in a TDR, TDR program as a means of continuing to project neighborhood character. Right now, I think that is, that is in the, directed toward the town center. That's going to be, some of the work is going to be worked on in the fall in regards to the docket. So you'll, that stuff may not get to you this year, may get to you in the following year, but, or at least towards the end of the year on that. Jeff, can, is that a full review of the TDR program?
Because I would think that would have multiple pieces to it, right? You've got the specific, you know, protected areas that, you know, the Inglewood Hill and some of those areas as well as in general across the city. And they don't necessarily have to be all done together, they could be done in pieces either way.
Going on, looking at Task 12, and there was a number of events that are, that are outlined that we'll be holding this year. There's some questions about what Task 12 is, which says organize and hold a new three-day event. That is an extension, Angie, I think of Samamish Days and Nights.
I think, I thought the council had some, just, we had some discussion, I don't, honestly, without rolling tape, I don't recall what we had discussed on that. Because I think.
We just, we, we put a, we put a cap on funding.
That was with the birthday though, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, fifty, fifty-year birth, or twenty-year birthday, twenty-year birthday. I think it better be the 21st birthday.
Right, so there was a request for additional funding of $50,000 to do the 20th anniversary. And that was declined and not funded. But we were making plans to expand Samamish Days anyway, and so this is separate from that. And yeah, moving that into a three-day event, so that Samamish Day is now actually Samamish Days.
Under Goal 3, there was a question about adding Objective 5, which would be coordinate with neighboring cities for regional and mutual support in case of emergencies. We already have mutual aid, so that is kind of a standard practice that, where we do those sorts of things if we do get into an emergency situation.
But isn't the chief working a lot on that as well?
Yeah, yeah, both, and I mean, you see that all the time, because a lot of time, if you have a major situation in, in town, a police emergency, you'll see police officers from everywhere, same thing on fire.
I mean, Chief Clark, too. He's working the emergency management plan for the EFER.
Yeah, but this is, this is dealing with bringing in resources from other agencies to help us.
It does possibly tie into us. Likely.
Going down under Goal 4, Objective 3, a couple of very good comments here. As we look at the urban forest management plan, may not fit right into this, but somewhere in here is a discussion about defensible space. I think, you know, with a city that has this wildland urban interface, I think you do need to talk about those things. And in addition, which we need to probably get back into our emergency management piece and public safety as planning city escape routes in case of emergency. We definitely need to designate those. So in a way that folks, depending on what situation may arise, would have some guidelines in terms of how best to avoid or get out of any situation we have. Because those things are always chaotic. Also, under Objective 4, there's a comment, "Can we add an objective here for things like improving the city's use of sustainable energy? Providing incentives to homeowners and business that improve or increase the use or reliance on sustainable energy sources? Also continue to study potential reduce and prohibit the use of certain fertilizers and other chemicals within the city limits." I think this is one at one of these work sessions we're going to want to talk through, because it's a question of what, what can we do? Particularly in the area of energy, since we don't control that situation on that. But if there's some incentives we can create or some partnerships that may help that, I think we can, we can discuss that, as long as I understand what it is we're shooting for there. Make sure I get on the right one, okay. Going to Goal 5. Under Objective 3, there was a question, "Don't we already have an assessment of the MOC and what is needed?" We have a, kind of a partial one, I think we need to go a little bit further. We need to look broad-based, not just at public works, but what parks and how, and whatever expansion that kind of gets in. The thing we're talking about, about looking at some type of annex to the MOC some, some point here in the future. Because already that's, we're at capacity. You've got a lot of equipment setting outside that needs to be undercover and you've got some spatial needs inside there as well. Under Objective 4, Councilor Valderrama talks about, "Do a right-size study to see what roles and functions can be consolidated and are missing." That's one we want to talk through, so we have a better understanding of what we're shooting for there. But I think that'll be a good, good discussion as well. And if I think I know we're shooting that, it's not a bad idea, but we want to make sure on that. Make sure I'm in the right spot here. That's what happens when you get too much paper. Oh, that's my problem. Okay, under Objective 9, the question is, "What is this?" And Jeff, I'm going to turn to you. That has to do with review and improve the land use mediation program, which was in, we brought forth in the budget. But if you give a short synopsis of what that is.
Sure. Good evening, Council, Jeff Thomas. That was a, a budget-funded item, just from this process last year. And what we're aiming to do there is to reduce, hopefully reduce in the future, the number of actual appeals that go to the city's hearing examiner. So as you're all aware, at this point, we have had historically cycles of land use appeals go to the hearing examiner, they're costly. We end up spending a lot of money on legal assistance, our city attorney's office, neighbors and applicants also spend money. And it's a very time-consuming and expensive process. So what we're hoping is that the mediation program will enable us to settle some of these disputes much earlier in the process. And we can save everyone time and money, so.
And then under Objective 11, which is to develop and implement an integrated citywide CIP, including all those areas. Question is, does this mean we have a CIP for each area? And then we have kind of a master plan CIP in which you look across all those different CIPs for what your priorities are? And the answer to that is yes, that's what we're talking about. Under Objective 12, there was a question about adding an additional task to evaluate the expansion of the Boys and Girls Club to better cover the South and high school kids. That's kind of beyond our authority to do, that's really the program of the Boys and Girls Club. I'm willing to talk about that to see what you may want in there. But again, if it's not something we have direct control of, I can't guarantee we can deliver that piece of it. And then under Goal 6, down at Objective 7, there is a comment, "To identify usage at different parks and ensure corresponding levels of service." I think that's one we'll want to talk about, so we better understand that as well. And then the final goal that you have is a new, is one that I've added in here, you may or may not want it. Definitely it has to do with economic development. And I just stated is expand the city's economy. Normally you'd have a diversify in there, but the reality is, I think our economy is going to be basically a combination of, of commercial and office space versus you're not going to have. I don't think you have industrial developments going to, going to take place here. There's a couple of comments here as well. First is, under the, "Develop and adopt a development agreement with STCA." There's a question, "Can we get more information on this and what does the development agreement entail?" The answer is yes, that's again, I think if we really want to add that goal, I think an economic development subcommittee would be helpful. Because I think there's some issues that we need to talk about and that timing is upon us now. Development agreement can take a lot of different forms, depending on what we're trying to accomplish here. But there's some give and take in, in some of that. And we're already getting some questions from STCA and those are type things that if we choose to, we could cover in, in a, a development agreement that might give them some flexibility. Again, we still have this other issue that we have to kind of figure out how we're going to handle the traffic and that's, that's a, that's a big piece of that. Under Objective 4, it says, "Develop an economic development element for the comprehensive plan." There's a question, "Is that mandatory under state law?" And it is, it's actually optional, it's, it's not mandatory. Nope, I'm sorry. And then there's a question about balancing the future cost of police fire, recycling, et cetera, between commercial and residential. I think again, one to talk about, so we get a better understanding of that. That's kind of a quick look at the comments we have to date. Again, as you have them here over the next few weeks, if you'll give those to me, we can integrate those in. And I think next time, again, you want to, I know this is a lot to look at and kind of get your head around. But if we could really begin to kind of focus on if there's anything in here that you feel uncomfortable with or things we need to change, we need to talk through that, as well as some of these pieces I've mentioned, we need to understand. And I think Jeff has a comment. Let me, let me get one comment and then we'll do that.
Just a quick clarification on that economic development element. It's optional unless the state funds the effort. So if the state provides funding, then it becomes mandatory for cities and counties planning under GMA.
So my first request is, will you, because we have this in our packet, we don't have a Word doc that we can then go and go into track changes? Excellent, okay.
But I've added a couple of things to it, so we'll send that out.
Councilmember Ritchie. Hold on, just a sec. Go ahead.
Larry, thank you. This has been sorely needed for, before I got on the council for a long time. And it's very important that we have something to work from. And I'm bummed out you're not going to be here to help us deal with it. And I hope the next person understands how much work went into this, because you did a lot of listening and a lot of awareness in a very short period of time to come up with a pretty comprehensive view of where we are and where the options and decisions that we have in front of us. So I'm very grateful for you doing that, thank you.
Thank you. I'm confident the next person will take this to an even higher level, so.
Councilmember Hornish.
Yes, thanks. I'm actually going to step up a little bit higher level. I do appreciate the work, Larry, but I think we are way, 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 way too far in the weeds for council on all of this list. I have been sitting in multiple board meetings for the last seven days at smaller public companies. And it's that time of year where they're setting, well, they're looking at, did they meet the goals from last year that they set for the CEO, the COO and the other execs? And then they're setting the new goals for the upcoming year, for 2019, which is, I think is what we are doing as a council is similar, different in many ways. But I think the leadership and the management is very similar to a board of directors and a CEO. I think we all are familiar with goal setting with the SMART acronym, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant and time-based. I don't see any of that in the goals that we have set. And I think we have too many details that should be flushed out for the, for the city manager to then manage to the goals. But I think we as council should be focused on the goals, not so much the objectives and tasks. That's the city manager's job. One of the pieces of advice I got years ago in leadership, we, I was, we were doing very similar to this with the company I was with, of trying to do everything at the same time and do, and getting nothing done. Brought in a new CEO, he said, "I want three objectives that you can do this year. I only want three, don't tell me about everything else that you might be working on. I want three things that you're going to do and finish this year, period." And any more than three, it's too much. And I think we are way stretched, way too thin to try to say, "We're going to do all of this in the next year, or in the next nine months, or whatever we're at right now." So I think we really need to step back up and boil it down much, much more as a council.
I, you know, we can do that, and again, I do appreciate, I think the council's focus is on the goal pieces. Again, what I'm trying to do is indicate some of the specific actions that we're going to be doing. Hopefully that's addressing those goals, hopefully that's also things that you're going to look at. The reason why I think we do move beyond one or two, because I used to be there as well, but what I found out is cities are a multi-pronged organization with multiple demands coming in from a lot of different places. I won't guarantee we'll get all that done, but I, with the staff you have, there's a good chance that 75% of this, again, is we can get done in the next two years, if not even a higher percentage. But that, again, when it comes to staff portion, it's really getting it to you. If you don't make the decision, it kind of sits right there. And I will indicate, when I look at the accomplishments of this city over the last year, it's pretty paltry in terms, we, there's just a lot of stuff just got hung up and didn't move forward.
Well, and I, and I would, I would counter that with, I think we've been too lack of focus on, in, in the past year or so. We need to step back and refocus on just a few things that we can actually get done versus trying to do everything. And that's my main point. I don't think a city and government is any more difficult than some of the companies that I'm advising and working with. I mean, they're, they're only doing things like trying to cure diseases, like cancer and diabetes and, and those type of things. So I, I think they're very much as complex as a city, if not even more so. But they still say, "Nope, what are you going to do for me now?" So I think we need to look at our leadership and management a little bit. Instead of trying to please everybody all of the time, we need to do a few things and actually get them done.
That's the discussion we need to have here over the next few work sessions.
Councilmember Ross.
I, I really agree with Councilmember Hornish, I think there's far too many goals. And the other problem with the goals, I really, I'm going to use Goal 6 as an example. There's too many policy goals that have to be decided by the council that are articulated in advance. Community discussion on utility tax, Objective 1, that's something only becomes on the work plan of the city manager if the council so decides. 1% property tax, another policy consideration. Authorize a contract to hire a financial advisor, that's another policy consideration and so on. It go, it, there's so many things that are policy considerations that are stated as outright tasks or goals, as if they're decided. And so we got to get away from specificity of the, many of the objectives or tasks that aren't something that the council hasn't previously approved. And that's, that's, and so there's going to be a lot of strikeouts when I do my walkthrough and comments back to you. But I do appreciate the framework and I do absolutely agree with Tom Hornish. We got to get it really down to five, no more than five core goals, because you get too many goals and we lose focus. Business has really gone towards.
You only have, you have seven goals here.
I understand, but.
You got to figure out what you're taking.
Too many, that's too many.
Opportunity to get rid of policy statements and that's going to dramatically reduce the detail under each goal.
We, we can do that, because again, the detail is not necessarily for you guys unless there's something in there we're not doing. The detail. The detail is more for me, because it's also a doc, document that helps me in terms of working with staff, so I'm showing you the top to bottom here, so.
Okay. Councilmember Valderrama.
Thank you. As I, well, first let me ask a question to Jeff Thomas on housing, I'm sorry, on the economic plan. My understanding...
Jeff, hold on a second, Mr. Mayor, Jeff stepped out.
Okay, well, while we wait for Jeff, I'll go on the other. I believe we need to have these goals laid out, and the seven of them. Again, this is based on our own priority list going forward. To say that we did a paltry amount is a euphemism. We've really done nothing, other than work with one factor of traffic concurrency, and that's been raised to us by our own planning commission unanimously, the citizens, and that, a lot of this is now catch-up. We did not have any goals given to Lyman when he was city manager or planning, and that's allowed us to continue to be stuck in the muck. This will allow staff to be focused on trying to get achievement and help us catch up. So I disagree, and I think we need to go forward with all of these. This is based upon the priorities we agreed on. The one that I would like to ask Jeff when he comes is on the issue of the economic development plan, because my understanding was, once you're over 50,000, it is mandatory.
The, the 50,000, I believe, comes from the size of the, the county, and that once your county population triggers 50,000, that county and the cities within the county have to plan under growth management. I'd be happy to double-check that and follow up with you, though.
Jeff, if you could, because this question came up back around 2012, when we did not include an economic development, and we were told at that time it was optional until we hit 50,000, and, and maybe it's changed since then as well, but I'd put it, you could just check that out, and then that would be the, the one question that I have on that. But going back to what was mentioned before, yeah, I, I think we're in desperate need to get these different goals and objectives laid out, and make it very clear to staff what they're working on, and for us to also keep track on and catch up. Thank you.
So I think, counsel, I, I think the idea here is, Larry kind of ran through it, we've all had a chance to read it, he's got a few comments back, if we can provide Larry with those comments, then we can have another touch with this later, rather than trying to hash through every single one of these, because we'll be here for a really long time.
You're gonna get two more touches, one on, on the first, and then I'll bring it back to you, I think it's the ninth, and if we need more than that, we'll, we'll take more than that.
So, we finish up on the sixteenth, what about the new city manager? They need to participate in the goal discussion?
Yep, I mean, you could, you could roll it over until then, and pick it up at that point as well, so.
I think it's kicking the can down the road, though, if we don't try and do something with it.
One, one of the, one of the, one of the reasons why you have this detail in here too, is with a new city manager coming in, they gotta get their head around a lot of different issues. And first thing, get a clear, what are we working on? This kind of get, shows them in short order, kind of, here's what's on the plate right now, which, that way, as they get oriented and get their feet on the ground, they may want to change this, may want to go back different. But at least it kind of shows them, here's what's in the pipeline right now, or at least what's been thrown at them, which would really be helpful when trying to get started in a place, because if, if not, you're looking at a couple of months before you really begin to kind of, I mean, first thing you gotta learn is who everybody's name is, and that's, that takes a bit. Okay, we'll roll this back over until you'll see it again on the first.
And you're gonna send out a Word document for us to kind of massage?
I am.
All right.